All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Sacramento County Planning Commission for January 24th, 2022. Lydia, do you want to go ahead and get us started with a statement this evening?
Yes, I will. This meeting is live streamed and temporarily closed to in-person public participation. The clerk's office is in the process of hosting hybrid public meetings that will provide board members and members of the public with the option to participate in the meeting, either in person or remotely. We thank you for your patience and support. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500. Follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter. When the chair opens public comment for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter, callers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. Written comments are always accepted. Please feel free to send your email comments to boardclerk@saccounty.net and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record.
All right. Thank you so much. Will you go ahead and call the role this evening?
Commissioners Borha.
President, good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Good evening. Martinson.
Here.
Rachel.
Here.
Tatisi.
Here.
And Wong.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Everyone's on board.
Thank you so much. With that, we're going to go ahead and move to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for bearing with the online meeting this evening. With that, we're going to go ahead and move on to our only item on the agenda this evening. Will you call item number one?
Yes, item number one is for a use permit amendment and design review located at 2300 Sierra Boulevard, approximately 0.2 miles east of the Sierra Boulevard and Howe Avenue intersections in the Arden Arcade community. And the environmental doc is an initial study and mitigated negative declaration.
Good evening. Do we have Jessie on the line this evening?
We do.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Jessie Shen, Senior Planner with Planning and Environmental Review, and I will be providing the presentation for this request. Next slide, please.
Jessie, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. Can you speak up or move your microphone closer?
Yeah. How is this? Is this better?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you so much.
Okay. The project site is 9.6 acres and is located at 2300 Sierra Boulevard, approximately 0.2 miles east of the Sierra Boulevard and Howe Avenue intersection in the Arden Arcade community. The project site is zoned RD 20, which is a multiple-family residential zoning district. And as shown on the slide, the project site is developed with structures and improvements associated with the existing church and private school use. Residential uses abut the project site to the east and west and are also located across Sierra Boulevard to the north. Specifically, the Sierra Regency Apartments is to the east and the Sierra Meadows Single Family Development is to the west of the project site. Additionally, the Woodside condominium development is located across Sierra Boulevard to the north and the Pavilion Shopping Center abuts the project site to the south. Next slide, please. The request is for a use permit amendment and design review to allow non-congregational events in our use incidental to the existing church facility and private school uses on the project site. Next slide, please. The following information pertains the history of the project site as it relates to this current request. A use permit was issued in July 1964 by the planning director to allow a church on the project site. In January of 2005, the Planning Commission approved a use permit to allow the expansion of the existing church and to allow private school uses on the project site. A special review of parking was also approved to allow a reduction in the required parking from 330 parking spaces to 281 parking spaces. The Planning Commission denied the request for deviations to parking lot landscape standards, and this denial resulted in parking lot landscape standards resulted in a further reduction in the number of parking spaces provided on the project site beyond the 281 parking spaces approved with the special review of parking. As a result, there are 265 parking spaces provided on the project site. Construction of the improvements associated with the 2005 entitlements, which are depicted on the site plan shown on the slide, concluded by October of 2009. A business license for the Mosaic Law Congregation was issued in July of 2010 for the description of activities, including meetings, bar and bat mitzvahs, plays, speakers, and other special events. Per identified those activities to be consistent with the existing church use on the project site, which is permitted with the aforementioned entitlements. During business license renewal activities in July of 2019, per recommended denial of the business license as it was discovered that the project site was being utilized as a venue for hosting events not related to the existing church use. In summary, non-congregational events have occurred on the project site without proper entitlements. Non-congregational events are not covered under the scope of the use permit approved by the Planning Commission in 2005, and any expansion of use or activity beyond that permitted in the approved use permit requires a use permit amendment request to the original hearing body. Next slide, please. To that end, the request is a use permit amendment to allow non-congregational events in our use incidental to the church and private school uses. Before we dive into the specifics of the request, it is important to note that events in our use as a primary use is not permitted in the project site zoning designation. The requested level of use is incidental, which is defined in the zoning code as subordinate and of minor consequence to the primary use on the same site and occupies not more than 25% of the gross floor area and less than 25% of the outdoor storage area. The request is for 70 non-congregational events per calendar year with a maximum capacity of 400 persons per event. Non-congregational events are defined as events that are not related to the existing church and private school uses on the project site. These events are limited to two locations on the project site: a 20,000-square-foot structure referred to as the Event Center circled in green on the slide and the Freedman Courtyard, which is an outdoor area circled in blue on the slide. No physical improvements to existing structures or other features on the project site are proposed with this request. Non-congregational events would be subject to the project's traffic management and parking plan, which generally stipulates that onsite parking monitors would direct attendees arriving in vehicles to park in the west lot, which provides for 164 parking spaces first, followed by the east lot, which provides for 101 parking spaces. Next slide, please. When the 265 parking spaces on the project site has been utilized to capacity, parking monitors would direct attendees to park at the Unitarian Universalist Church parking lot, approximately 670 feet east of the project site. This offsite parking lot, which is noted in yellow on the slide, would provide for an additional 166 parking spaces, and a shuttle would operate between the offsite parking lot and the project site to transport attendees between locations. An initial study was prepared to analyze the project's impacts pursuant to CEQA in regards to transportation and public safety on area roadways. The initial study concluded that the project would result in a less insignificant impact with implementation of an identified mitigation measure. Related to the offsite parking lot, although a shuttle is proposed to transport attendees, attendees may choose to walk between the two locations. There are accessibility limitations of the existing pedestrian facilities along Sierra Boulevard between the two locations. As such, mitigation is identified requiring the installation of a marked pedestrian crossing between Sierra Boulevard and the installation of curb ramp improvements along the designated walking path between the two sites. Next slide, please. During the course of the entitlement process, 52 written comments were received from 29 unique individuals. The majority of comments expressed opposition to the project due to noise, parking traffic, litter, and other nuisances experienced by surrounding residents from prior non-congregational events, as well as general opposition to allowing an event center venue near residential uses. Several comments expressed support for the project, and these commenters have generally been leases or attendees of a prior non-congregational event or nearby residents who have not experienced the nuisances noted above. Separately, 48 common letters were received during the CEQA comment period. Pursuant to CEQA, responses to these comments have been prepared and are included as Attachment 10 to the staff report. The majority of the comments did not pertain to the adequacy of the environmental analysis, but rather expressed opposition to the project for the aforementioned reasons. Following the preparation of the staff report, an additional 67 comment letters have been received by the clerk of the board's office and forwarded to the commissioners. The characterization of these comment letters is similar in nature to those aforementioned. Apart from PERS Neighborhood Outreach, sorry, apart from PERS Neighborhood Outreach associated with the entitlement process, there has been ongoing dialogue and meetings held between the applicant and a group of concerned neighbors since the fall of 2019. Neighborhood groups submitted conditions they wish to see placed on the project. There is precedence for allowing a religious facility to host non-church-related events. The nearby Unitarian Universalist Church is approved to allow non-church-related events and activities on their site. The recommended conditions for this project draws on the use standards for events in our use as a primary use, the neighborhood groups submitted comments, and the conditions on the Unitarian Universalist use permit. Recommended conditions include good neighbor conditions requiring a calendar of non-congregational events be available for viewing by interested persons and a hotline in constant operation during non-congregational events to monitor and respond to concerns, conditions stipulating onsite security, parking and traffic control, and litter management, noise-controlling measures, including conditions prohibiting concerts or similar and limiting the number of attendees for non-congregational events in the Freedman Courtyard, requiring outdoor areas associated with non-congregational events to remain at least 100 feet from residentially-zoned properties, and door monitors to ensure doors remain closed for non-congregational events with amplified sound. There are conditions limiting the hours for, number of, and maximum capacity of non-congregational events. The sheriff's office recommends two conditions: one requiring prior notification to leases of parking restrictions along Sierra Boulevard and notification of event details to the sheriff's office for events with 200 persons or greater. Lastly, there is a recommended condition to sunset the use permit for non-congregational events. This use permit for incidental non-congregational events in our use would expire 15 years from the date of approval. Next slide, please. To recap, the request is for a use permit amendment to allow incidental non-congregational events on the project site. Specifically, 70 non-congregational events per calendar year is requested with a maximum capacity of 400 persons per event. Non-congregational events would be subject to the project's traffic management and parking plan. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared pursuant to CEQA for the project. One mitigation measure related to pedestrian safety was identified for the project. Responses to comments received during the CEQA comment period have been prepared, and no comments presented evidence that the project would have a significant impact on the environment. A substantial amount of public comments have been received in opposition to the project. These comments express opposition due to the project due to nuisances experienced by nearby residents from prior non-congregational events on site and a general opposition to an event center use cited near residential uses. The Arden Arcade CPAC recommended a three yes, one no approval of the project recommending the incorporation of neighborhood conditions and commensurate conditions from the Unitarian Universalist use permit. Recommended conditions for this project are crafted to address the concerns expressed by commenters and to ensure minimal nuisance impacts to surrounding residential properties. Should these conditions be violated, the planning director or the board of supervisors may refer the matter of modifying or revoking the use permit to the Planning Commission for consideration. Next slide, please. Staff is recommending approval of the project and that the Planning Commission take the following actions listed on this slide. Staff is available to answer any questions from the commissioners, and the applicant team consists of Judy and Barry Weiner of Mosaic Law Congregation, and they are represented by Brian Holloway of Holloway Land Company.
Thank you.
Sorry, everyone. I'm talking to you on mute. Questions from commissioners for staff this evening?
I have a question. This is Commissioner Tatisi. In regards to the, you setting your presentation that the church down the road, the Universalist Church, has permission to have, is it unlimited number of non-congregation events? Or is it, are they, do they have similar conditions as we're describing here that limit their numbers? Or is it just kind of open-ended?
Good evening, Commissioner. There are no conditions placed on the Unitarian use permit in terms of the number of events they can have, but there are conditions regarding when these events can occur as well as what venues can be used at the time. But there are no commensurate conditions in terms of, like, this project has 70 non-congregational events and a maximum capacity. Those are not in the Unitarian.
Okay. And are, is similar in the sense of, like, timelines? Like, I think it was 10 o'clock ending on weekdays and Friday, Saturdays, 11 o'clock. Similar, are those a similar conditions or is it completely different?
Those are similar. So the Unitarian use permit says that all non-church-related events and activities associated with rental agreements inside the church facility shall conclude no later than 11:00 PM, excluding associated cleanup.
And then just in general, is it, are there a lot of religious organizations that have event centers in the county right now through these types of permits? Or are these exceptions to the rule?
Commissioner, to my knowledge, this is the only other religious use with a similar request to the one before us today.
So if I'm correct in what you're saying, there are only two religious organizations in the entire county of Sacramento in its jurisdictional zones that would have event centers versus social halls for their congregations?
No, Commissioner Tatisi, this is Chris Bohulie. I do believe that, you know, there's obviously a lot of other religious institutions that have social halls and others. These are the only two that we are aware of that have, that would have express authorization with their use permits to be used for these non-congregation events. We may be unaware of other, of other leasing out of space, but these would be the only two that we are aware of that, where it's expressly authorized with their use permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Other commissioners with questions for staff this evening?
Yes, this is Commissioner Wong. I don't know if staff would necessarily have this information, but I know that, or it's been established that the other church does not have limitations on the number of events that they currently hold per year. But is there any indication on, on average, how many events they do hold? Is it one a week? Is it one a month? You know, what are the size of those events? Do we have any kind of information on the other center?
Don't have any information regarding those inquiries on the Unitarian operations.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Or any information on code enforcement actions? Since these, I think it got brought up in some of the public comments that, that there may have been a previous issues with the Unitarian church. I'm just curious if, if this has been the same use permit restrictions for them or if they have had an amended permit with more restrictions on it? Do we know the history?
Hi, Chair. So the Unitarian church does not have a, the one that is the use permit that's attached to the staff report, that is the live use permit. They have not had any subsequent use permits or anything that speaks to their, the activities beyond their congregation. In terms of code enforcement cases, if you give me a second, I can look that up for you. As for this project site, there are no code enforcement cases on, on the Mosaic Law site. If you give me a second, I can look up the Unitarian one.
Thank you so much. And other questions for staff while she's looking that up?
Hi, this is Commissioner Borha, if I may.
Please.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate the staff as well as the project applicants and all interested community members in really providing us with a robust amount of feedback and information and engagement on this topic. I would like to be transparent and say that I have met with both the project applicants on one of their tours as well as folks in different occasions who have had concerns about this application. So I just want to put that on the record. One of the questions that I had for the county staff is about existing kind of parity and applicability of laws. There was a comment from the owner of the Dante Club, which, which kind of triggered a question for me about how are we potentially providing for a uniformity and understanding of all applicable laws? And so I don't know if the staff have had an opportunity to see that comment. It was submitted to Board Member Rich Desmond, or Board Supervisor Rich Desmond, but I was just curious to see if there is any responses from the staff about that comment from the Dante Club that did say that they are operating as an actual social kind of event center, but their argument is that they would fall differently or this event centered, let's try to get this conditional use permit, would fall differently on the laws that they're having to, to follow. So I'm just kind of interested and curious to see if staff have any comments on that.
Commissioner, I did take a look at the Dante Club. Are you speaking to maybe the Dante Club and what their help, the standards they're held to as an event center versus how this project is treated?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Could you give me a second? I'm going to pull up the Dante Club's use just to make sure we're on equal footing moving forward in this discussion. But I do want to report back that there are no code cases on the Unitarian site. But let me pull up the Dante Club information, and we can just confirm that their use is an event center as well, and then that would put us on equal footing to move forward for, for a response.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Think before we get more questions behind, I'll just give for a moment to, to look that up. We'll just take a brief pause.
And this is Lydia with the clerk of the board's office. Chair Rachel, we do have upwards of 26 public commenters. And how much time would you like to give them? Two minutes each or?
Do we, I know we have a group that wanted to speak. Do we have multiple groups that are interested in speaking tonight? Or are these individual commenters?
Well, they're individual commenters, but I don't, however, we don't know if they're contained in the same room, but these are 26 separate phone lines.
Got it.
And I do see several of the, several of them are also listed in the attendee section that, that we're aware of. There are 60 in the attendee section, but I'm sure that some of them will probably be public commenters as well.
Got it. If it's okay with council and staff, I would prefer to give the group that we are aware of, the Sierra Boulevard Neighborhood Committee, some extra time. Let's say we can give them five minutes. And then if there's other people that are part of that committee that are on the line, they could just indicate their support of that and make a quicker comment. And then if we could give the individuals two minutes, is that acceptable?
And the question's out to the board members, commission members.
This is speaking for council. Five minutes is the usual standard for a group presentation, so that's fine.
Was that counsel?
I agree with you.
Yeah, counsel. Thank you.
It was.
I agree with Mr. Burke. Also, just to make sure the project applicant have the opportunity to also present and answer questions on Chair Rachel, so everybody would have an opportunity.
We'll let the applicant speak before public comment.
Understood. Thank you so much.
And I do see Ms. Walker in the, on the attendee side. I do not, however, we don't know who's actually in the phone queue until we bring them through and they announce themselves. So we'll kind of have to play it by ear, guys, if that's all right.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That, that sounds good. So five minutes to the, to the group. And then if there's any other groups that are on the line that we find out about, we can grant them extra time too, but we'll try to stick to two minutes for individuals. We have read all of your written comments. Those have been distributed to us. Everyone that is on the line that's taken the time to do that, we appreciate that because then we can go through them ahead of time and, and understand your comments ahead of time. So we should, we definitely appreciate that.
Perfect. Thank you.
And did we have a response about the Dante Club at this time? Or should we go on to other questions for staff?
Hi, Chair. We do have a response. So we did look up the Dante Club. They are, they are categorized as an event center as their primary use in response to the commissioner's question. We treat, so the conditions that we crafted for this, this request draw from the use standards for an event center as a primary use. So the conditions placed on this project would be the same as those placed on the Dante, the Dante Club. However, in certain cases, the conditions placed on this project are a bit more onerous in terms of, I'd like to highlight a few conditions. One would be we are, we are proposing to sunset this use permit. We don't typically do that for use permits, but that is one condition we are proposing in light of the concerns from the community. There are some other standards that are more onerous in terms of, we have ratios for security that are required depending on the number of guests and whether alcohol is involved or not. So they would be treated similarly. However, this, this project has a bit more conditions that are a bit more onerous. That is the short answer. And the Dante Club, for example, would not have a condition that says you are only permitted 70 events per calendar year and anything to that extent.
Understood. Thank you so, yes, thank you for that information. I appreciate you looking that up. And I pass it back to Chair Rachel. Thank you.
And I'll open it up. Any other questions for staff this evening at this time, commissioners, before we move on to the applicant's presentation?
Yeah, this is Karen, Commissioner Martinson. I just had a question actually about the sunset and that process. Is there an opportunity to reevaluate that in 15 years? Or what is the specific condition?
Good evening, Commissioner. There is an opportunity for the applicant to extend that, this request. So they would just need to apply for a use permit amendment similar to what is before you now before the expiration of the use permit. And at that time-
So we'll have to, oh, sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
Right. And at that time, staff could evaluate based on the history of operations and what has happened in those 15 years, whether to identify another sunset or to allow it forever.
Wouldn't have to come back in front of the Planning Commission?
Absolutely. Just to add on and in response to your, your comment, Commissioner Martinson. Yes, it would go through a, a similar type process as this use permit amendment. So it would be, it would go through a public review. It would come back ultimately to the Planning Commission to make a determination on the use permit amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Tatisi again. I, a couple more questions have just come to mind for staff.
For, for anyone who has a, you know, that doesn't have an event center designation or the ability to have non-congregation from a religious organization, are there abilities for, for, for these institutions to be able to apply for one-off exemptions or special permits to have an event, or is it, if there is a need kind of a thing, or is this something where any non, or any religious entity that has a social hall would have to apply to become an event center, or to get these types of use permits to do that, or can they do one-offs?
Commissioner Tatishi, Chris Boholi. Yes, absolutely, there is the ability to handle one-off events. The zoning code allows for temporary use permits, and with a temporary use permit, a a potential applicant could hold up to 10 events per calendar year with a temporary use permit.
And would that just be something that Planning Staff decides, or does that go through the formal processes?
It is a, the decision is made by the zoning administrator, and so it is a ministerial action. It's not one that is noticed to the public. And so there isn't the sort of robust process that there is with this use permit request.
So when Planning is looking at these types of permits, because if I'm correct in understanding this zoning says that event centers are not allowed in residential areas, is is that as basic as it is, that in theory, this isn't allowed?
An event center is not allowed in residential use, but a religious institution is allowed.
Right. So this is a religious institution asking to have events that are non-congregation related. Is that considered, are we considering this now in an event center, or is it still a like a social hall that just is now authorized to have up to 70 events?
No, it continues to be a religious institution, and as Jesse pointed out in the presentation, the request is for incidental use of the facility as a, for non-congregational events.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Commissioner Wong again. Speaking of the permanent, or I'm sorry, the temporary use permits, I have a question. I noticed in the materials that the Mosaic Law Center was actually provided a temporary permit for up to 10 events. Previously, I don't remember over what the timeframe of that was. Maybe it was around during a sixth month or so timeframe, and I think it was because it was found out that they were having events that they were not supposed to be having. But then I also noticed in the materials that a couple of letters were sent to them notifying them that they were in violation of that temporary permit. You know, or in violation of, you know, some of the conditions, or they're holding events that were not listed as listed as a part of those 10 events. Can you tell me, was there any, other than the two letters that were sent to them, was there any other action or anything taken? What kind of happened with that?
Good evening, Commissioner. I guess you're correct. So Attachment 5 to the staff report is the temporary use permit that was granted to allow 10 non-congregational events on the site between September 22, 2019, and April 23, 2020. And really, the premise for allowing that temporary use permit is the applicant had indicated that they had already had contracts in place for these events, and this was a venue to allow for it to occur. We did receive notices that at least two events that were not listed in the temporary use permit did occur on the project site. And so those letters that are attached in Attachment 5 are in response to her receiving those notices. The letters indicate, or the letters, we, we nip, we recognize that these were violations, and we disclose that potential punitive actions such as revocating the temporary use permit and our business licenses, the business license would occur if we caught wind of any other violations. However, we did not take any of those actions. And then COVID happened, so.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I have a, maybe a simple question and a tough question of how do we determine a congregational use versus a non-congregational use? So if it's a member of a congregation that say wants to put on an event, is that allowed, or is it purely only events that are put on directly by the congregation, and then how would that apply to the school? I'm just wondering if like, and I don't know if there's a parent-teacher association at the school, right, but if the PTA wanted to host a fundraiser in the said event center, well, they're not technically the congregation, so would they be a non-congregational event? How do, how do we define? I think some of them would be very clear to define, right? It's like somebody that's completely unrelated to the congregation, that's a different organization, 100%, but maybe some of them are a little gray, and I'm just wondering how you guys make that determination?
Good evening, Chair. So the way that we've been treating these non-congregational events is that it's not related at all to the existing school and church on site. An example of a congregational event in a gray area that you speak of could be if a member of the congregation wanted to have their wedding at the event center. Because the congregation, because the person who would want to have their wedding on the project site is a member of the congregation, we would treat that as a congregational event versus a non-congregational event. The example you brought up was a bit more hairier, and I haven't really thought through it. But we, we were considering at the time when the calendar, which has conditioned the calendar that is like allowed or available for members of the public to be viewed. We were thinking about that in terms of notifying the public of a congregational, of a non-congregational event.
Yeah, I guess that the, I just bring it up. I had noticed in that violation letter, it was like a fundraising breakfast for an event. It seems like it would have a small impact on a community, but I'm just trying to understand kind of where, I don't know if there's like shared board members, like members of the congregation that are involved in that charity, like, it just, it just seems like very tough to to decide between incidental use and a congregational use. I'm just trying to work out, like, like, is it really self-reported going forward, or how would we, how was it, is it up to them to decide whether it's a congressional use or not to count to 70?
The way the conditions are crafted currently, it would be self-reporting.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Other questions for staff this evening?
Just really quickly, on that, sorry, on the temporary, if they were to apply for a temporary use permit, you said 10 events a year is, so that's capped at 10 events a year, or is it they could apply for a use permit for 10 events and then apply again for temporary use? Or is it just you can apply for one a year and it's 10 events that process?
It would be 10 events per calendar year between January 1st to December 31st, and there would be no no additional events that could be granted on the site.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess I do have one more clarification between the incidental and the regular use. A congregational event has no restrictions on the hours of operation or the size of the event other than buyer capacity?
Correct. So the, the conditions that are included in Attachment 2 would only be subject, would only be placed on non-congregational events. Congregational events are not, the, the use permit for congregational events are not being opened up at this time. Those would be under the 2005 entitlements that were granted by the Planning Commission.
But those are 24 hour, there's no restriction on the time of those events, and the restriction on the amount of people is 800 or 900? Is that-
Right, right. Yeah, there's no restrictions placed on congregational events.
So if you guys were to get a complaint about a quote congregational event that went late and was over capacity, then that would not impact the use permit because it wouldn't be in violation of the existing use?
That is correct.
I have, I have a lot of respect for code enforcement. That's a tough one. Thank you for answering those questions.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff this evening? All right, we're gonna move on to the applicant's presentation. It looks like you've got Judy and Barry Weiner on the line, and Brian Holloway. Guys are welcome to take off. You, I believe we need to get you sworn in first, so. Good evening, Chair.
Okay, Mr. Holloway, Mr. Weiner, and Ms. Weiner as well. I'm going to go ahead and get this one as the Chair mentioned. So if you wish to address the commission, we ask that you prepare yourselves to be sworn. Please raise your right hands, and appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
I do.
And when you, before you make your comment, if you could please state your name for the record and make the statement, "I have been sworn," respectively. Please proceed.
Brian Holloway, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Rethel and Commissioners, Brian Holloway, Holloway Land Company, representing Mosaic Law Congregation and Event Center. First, let me thank our planning staff, Jessie Chen, for her hard work, her patience, and a very thorough staff report. With me tonight, as you know, is Mosaic Law President Judy Weiner, Barry Weiner, and our traffic consultant, Ken Anderson, is also on the line. And Judy would like to speak with you following me, but the others are primarily here to answer any questions the commissioners may have. First thing I'd like to say is we have read the staff report, and we agree and accept all of the conditions of approval within. And I have a short PowerPoint presentation about the project and the process, which I'm not going to read to you. I'm, I know you can do that, and so we'll be able to make this a lot briefer. So we're trying to bring the PowerPoint up. It worked this afternoon.
And Mr. Holloway, the Clerk's Office does not have your presentation in order to be able to present it for you. If you'd like to email it over as soon as you can, then we can try to get it queued up to present for you.
We can do that.
Okay. Let me see. If you could please send it to boardclerk@satcounty.net.
Okay.
And then we will get it to our presenter, and we can move forward. Bear with us, please.
Okay. Go ahead and send it.
While we're waiting on that to go ahead and get queued up, Commissioner Borha mentioned earlier that he had met with the applicant and also concerned public with that. So I'll go ahead and put on the record. I also met with the applicant onsite and met with a number of the residents on the project also. If there's other commissioners that want to disclose that, we've got a little break here while we wait on the presentation, so go ahead.
Hi, this is Commissioner Wong. I'd also like to disclose that I had conversations with stakeholders from both sides as well.
This is Commissioner Martinson. I had conversations with both sides as well.
The PowerPoint has been sent to the board clerk.
Thank you, and we're checking for it. And then we've got to get it queued up, and it should be ready to go momentarily. Just please bear with us.
Does it have all the language in it?
This is Alma from the Clerk's Office. Also, I just would like to state that this PowerPoint will be uploaded to OnBase and published for the public to also have access to the same material at the same time.
Thank you, Alma.
And this is Lydia with the Clerk of the Board's Office. Mr. Holloway, will Mr. and Mrs. Weiner be presenting a separate presentation this evening?
I don't, I don't believe she has any visuals to show.
Perfect, thank you. All right, and it looks like we're on screen with your presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a short PowerPoint, as I mentioned. In terms of the event center, it provides three significant benefits to the Sacramento community. Next slide, please. First is supporting arts and cultural engagement in the community for performances and rehearsals and organizing. And you can see here some of the cultural groups that benefit from being able to perform and utilize the center. Next slide. The second community enhanced by the center is local schools. The list here shows some of the schools that have been supported in the past at the center. Students, faculty, and parents tend to use the center when their special events are too large or require the special equipment and facilities not available at their respective multipurpose rooms. Next slide, please. The third community to benefit from the event center are the large number of charities throughout Sacramento that utilize the center for business events, social gatherings, and especially for fundraising. Next slide. I think it's important to mention that although the event center is funded and managed by a single faith-based entity, they excel at ensuring that a diverse group of charities and their guests are able to use the center. The Mosaic Law Board of Trustees is taking complete control of the center. We've apologized for the earlier problems and have accepted the neighbors' demands regarding event size, frequency, traffic, security, noise prevention, and on-site parking. And we've asked that those become conditions of approval for your commission. And we plan to continue meeting with the neighbors in the future to ensure that any other problems that pop up would be addressed immediately. Next slide. Because of the issues in the past, we conducted one of the largest neighborhood outreach efforts that I've personally been involved in over the last 40 years. Over 1,100 property owners or residents were made aware of the project, provided information, and invited to meet at the site, raise issues, and ask questions. The neighborhood established a neighborhood working committee early on, which we joined immediately, and we spent over a year working with them to learn about the concerns and the problems and to find solutions. which we joined immediately, and we spent over a year working with them to learn about the concerns and the problems and to find solutions. And I believe I was able to provide to each of the commissioners the list of who attended and the dates of all those meetings, including the agendas and some of the minutes. We concluded those meetings with the 11 conditions that we've agreed to with the neighbors and are now recommended as conditions of approval. We mailed invitations to 441 property owners within 600 feet of the 20-acre property for them to tour the center and enjoy and join in a question and answer session. And unfortunately, that gathering had to be canceled. Following that, we worked with the Woodside Homeowners Association to mail an invitation for a second tour and question and question and answer opportunity to all 725 Woodside residents. Approximately 16 of those residents participated in the event that we were able to do. Next, next slide, please. I'd like to touch on some of the significant, some of the significant of the 11 concessions that we provided to ensure that past problems never occur again. The most significant two are reducing the maximum of ten, maximum attendance for non-congregational events from 900 to more than, to no more than 400. We also agreed that there would be no more than 70, 70 congregational events annually. And we worked with an adjacent neighbor to ensure that only 49 of those 70 would actually be in the 300 to 400 attendee range. And we would be fine if you wanted to make add that as a condition of approval. We we agreed it to time limitations on our events, standards for adequate security, we require parking lot attend, parking lot attendance, and preventing any parking in the neighborhood by having mechanisms that require that all guests park Uber or ride share onsite, and they must have a ticket to get in. Next slide. Another, several other good, good neighbor ideas that we would like to include are improve, providing a sign at the front of the property, providing the name and cell number of a mosaic trustee or member for neighbors, any neighbor to call should there be a concern or an issue before, during, and after an event, a non-congregational event. Additionally, that trustee or member will attend all non-congregational events with that cellphone in hand to respond to any calls. And we hereby wish to request, are we, we wish to withdraw our request to park offsite at the Universalist Church down the street. Our neighbors have been concerned about that, and we have finally figured out that we actually, with the restrictions, we don't need, we no longer need that offsite parking. We can park completely on our own site. Next slide, please. In conclusion, we believe that the combination of conditions and restricted restrictions recommended by staff and those recommended by ourselves, that the problems that occurred before will never happen again. We believe with the projects identified conformance and consisting with the general plan, community plan, community action plan, and zoning, combined with the traffic, parking, and sequel analysis, and along with the findings before you contained in your staff report, and considering broad benefits supported by the, by the center, that these do provide your commission with sufficient reasons to support the staff recommendation. Thank you for your time. I apologize for the PowerPoint problem, and we are available to answer any questions following Judy Weiner's comments. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Weiner, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm Judy Weiner, and I've been sworn. Good evening, and I want to thank the commissioners for hearing our project requests this evening. I've been a proud member of Mosaic Law Congregation since the early 1980s, having joined congregational leadership five years ago and began my tenure as president, president of the Board of Trustees in June of 2020. I'm also here tonight as a proud member of the greater Sacramento community and excited about the work we are doing to bring forth a brand-new responsible center that will serve as a critical hub for our neighborhoods to experience and enjoy the music, culture, and arts our region has to offer. To be honest, the management and leadership of the center's operation over the past eight years at times was an embarrassment. Some of the events scheduled were not appropriate for our facility, and some of the decisions were disrespectful to the neighborhood and the families who live near the center. And today we are pressing forward into a new era. As we work to reopen the center with a focus on community enrichment, we have worked diligently with our neighbors to hear their concerns and to make sure the mistakes of the past are never repeated. We've met with the neighborhood committee on multiple occasions and have invited them to tour our facility. We have limited attendance for future events to no more than 400 people and no more than 70 events annually and agreed to promptly end our events 10:00 p.m. on weekdays and 11 o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays. We are committed to providing adequate security and attendance for our parking lot, and there'll be a phone line open during events for any concerns from the neighborhood. We've spent the last two and a half years making these significant improvements and working towards earning a conditional use permit with the County of Sacramento. We're serious about managing the center under a new paradigm, one of respect, consideration, and partnership with with the surrounding community. The center has a brand-new committee comprised of five dedicated member volunteers who will be working with the new center director, personally managing the parking lot and attending events to make sure they run smoothly and do not disturb the neighborhood. We have also heard concerns and fears about negative impacts on local property value if the center reopens. We believe these concerns are unfounded, and here's what we know. Because according to various real estate websites, there has been an in, a 55% increase on average in property values in the neighborhood in just the last five years. In closing, the truth is the center at 2,300 will add immense value to the greater Sacramento area. Nonprofit organizations have used the center to raise millions of dollars over the last eight years, including organizations like Habitat for Humanity and the Sacramento Children's Home, to name a few. The center is a beautiful state-of-the-art facility where families and artists and community members can hold dance recitals, holiday lunches, and even fashion shows. That's why we are so pleased that the county planning staff is recommending approving the conditional use permit and why we urge the planning commission to vote in favor of our project request this evening. And I do want to state, we were talking about congregational versus non-congregational events. We will run our congregational events with the same parameters as the non-congregational, limiting 400 people. They will end at 10 o'clock and 11 o'clock, things like that. We're not going to, you know, go overboard and and do things differently when it's a congregational event. And thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiner. Questions for the applicant this evening? Commissioners, any questions for the applicant this evening? Can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right, good. I'm just making sure. Last time I was talking to myself, asking for questions. All right, hearing no questions for the applicant this evening. Thanks to both for your presentations. We're going to go ahead and take a public comment now. But please stay on the line if we have anything more questions we'll ask you after a public comment.
Please send the first caller.
Go ahead, Lydia.
And I'll call her. You are now in the meeting. If you could please go ahead and make your public comment. And I apologize, we'll have to get that caller back on the line. If you could please send the next caller. Hello, caller. You're now in the meeting. If you could go ahead with your public comment, please.
Hello, my name is John, and I live on Black Mare Circle. And I moved here in 2019. I'm calling on behalf of my family. We have a two-year-old and a seven-week-old daughter. And for those of you who've been there, you know we're in the thick of it, so this is important to us, and so we're prioritizing this public, this public comment period. And I just want to start by saying that we really do value today, Mosaic Law's contribution to our community as a base-based organization and a sub-community within, within our broader community here. With that said, we have multiple concerns about the event center going a tenth of a mile from our house. And our reasons are numerous, but I'll start with, you know, when we looked at the neighborhood and we purchased our house to plan to grow our family, we wouldn't have purchased a house knowing that an event center with frequent, you know, moderately large-scale events were allowed for a number of reasons. One is best-in-safety of, as our girls are, you know, crossing the street or playing, you know, playing in our driveway. The other is that while it's great to hear that the center has plans for security at events, really what that drives is illegal activity outside of events. And speaking as a former teenager here, I don't know if anyone else in the call was, but I can tell you that, you know, security inside is great, but it really just drives some of that behavior off the premises. Switching gears, I think, you know, in regards to environmental review, I think this review overlooks really simple tendencies of human nature. People will take the shortest route possible, and they will park not just at the, at the center, especially when it is full, but with the consideration that the, the center has removed their request for parking in a church parking lot. They're going to park in our neighborhood because it's the closest one, and it's a public street. And there's nothing we can do as a public street to prevent that. You know, another point is that we've invested heavily in our house to this point with more investment planned to renovate. You know, we, we pay taxes in this county. Our daughters are going to go to school in this county. We have agency and we have a stake in this, in this neighborhood.
Hello, caller. Can you please wrap up your comment?
Yes, I'll finish by just saying that the rule of law really does not differentiate between what is a acceptable level of breaking the law, as Mr. Pogel suggested by stating that if a religious org with an event center.
Thank you, caller. Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hello, caller. You're now in the meeting. Can you go ahead with your public comment? Hello, caller.
Yes?
Okay, you're now in the meeting. Can you please start with your public comment?
I'm watching down the road.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
I'm putting in, uh, commissioners. My name is Caesar Corrigan. I live at 741 Lotte Circle. My neighborhood and the surrounding areas have been subject to the illegal non-mentor events held at the Mosaic Law property for years. A present day reply for an event center permit. In accordance to zoning code 2.6.1, event centers are not allowed in any residential neighborhoods. Zoning code 2.6.1 promotes and protects the public health, safety, and the general welfare of residential bodies by protecting the character of the district, observing the value of land and buildings, and the county's tax revenues. Granting an event center permit goes to Mosaic Law, these commissioners will be in violation of the zoning code, promoting an unfair competitive advantage to other sectors located within the applicable business zone. Mosaic Law can not be given exclusive right to violate this prohibition and change its social hall status to an event center even on an incidental basis. And they, and by the way, 70 events, events per year is certainly not incidental. In the commission, commissioners, your expectation, it will be up to the course to decide the legality of this decision, which probably suggests the commission has considered the welfare is more than 1,000 residential units and oppose the request of Mosaic Law to operate as an event center, a revenue-generating institution right in the heart of the residential public neighborhood. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hello, caller. You're now in the meeting. Can you please start with your comment?
I am a member of Mosaic Law. I've lived across the street for 42 years in Woodside. I did not oppose the construction of the social hall now called the center, which I understood was intended for congregational events. 70 non-congregational events per year far exceed the annual number of congregational events, thereby making commercial, non-congregational events the primary activity in congregational events, the incidental use. Counties only codes establish it between social halls and general purpose events. This amendment involves a commercial event center masquerading as a social hall. Please do not endorse this magic masquerade. It's an entry to the neighborhood and sets a terrible precedent for future planning decisions. Further, it is not the obligation of a social hall with any house of worship to support the community. A social hall is defined as having congregation-related events and events that benefit a local neighborhood. So although it's all good that lovely things have been done and are planned for the broader community, that is not the purpose of a social hall. And in fact, those deprive event centers like the Dante Club from their legitimate earnings. I do, I want to mention that until Mosaic Law began leasing the center commercially, we've had a very harmonious relationship. I would also like to point out that UUSF does not have a complete free-for-all. They abide by their events being to fraternal and other more local organizations. They're not large commercial competition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Please send the next caller. Hello, caller. You're now in the meeting. Please make your public comment.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm Barbara Tigert. I live on Black Mare Circle, right across the street from the event center. I've lived here for 41 years. And one of the commissioners earlier in the meeting was, seemed confused about how event centers are different from social halls. I'd say event centers are run for profit. And right now, we have less than a mile away the Dante Club, and I know that the owner of the Dante Club objects because the event center is illegally taking away his profits, which he otherwise would be, you had a discussion about his, owed the way he is and everything. But anyway, there are other event centers immediately in the area. We don't want any center across the street from us. I would say that the comments of Judy and Barry Weiner sound good, but I think they're misleading and deceiving because ever since 2015, the events and the Mosaic Law has had events that the police had to be called to. It leaves our Black Mare Circle airborne, way strewn with alcohol bottles, drug paraphernalia, all kinds of things. Young women are scantily clad. And
Oh, boy.
I, pardon?
I'm sorry, caller. Go ahead, please.
Okay, am I just starting now?
No, you have been, you, you're in the meeting, and you can continue, please. We've heard you all along. Thank you.
So I would ask the Board of Supervisors to enforce the code, which is the law, and deny any variance. It's illegal for an event center in a residential neighborhood. We are a residential. They don't have confidence that they will follow through. So thank you for hearing my comments. I'm asking you again. So thank you for hearing my comments, I'm asking you again to enforce, enforce the code. There's no event centers allowed in residential neighborhoods, I've lived here 41 years, and it's a beautiful neighborhood, and the Mosaic Law...
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, go ahead with your comment please.
Pardon?
You're in the meeting, go ahead with your comment.
Thank you, good evening Commissioners, in 30 years of government service, I learned that there are three salient considerations with approval. Is it legal? How much will it cost? And does it set a precedent? So let's go to number one, legal? No. Pardon? Opposition? Highly controversial, as I'm sure you've heard. Two, cost? Exceeds what money can buy, impact not just on our property, but on people's lives. How much are our lives worth? Families with children, seniors who bought on the street where speed bumps signal the county's commitment to a sedate residential area. When the Mosaic Law School was built years ago, we sat at the hearings and were assured no noise, it's only a school we were promised. Yet we've been good neighbors throughout loud events and traffic. Three, precedence. As a mate of Sacramento, every neighborhood needs to know that this could happen to them. Sweet promises, and then comes a surprise. To me, it's rather scary, and the larger community in my hometown needs to know that this could happen to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, please send the next caller. Hello caller, go ahead with your comment please. Yes, go ahead with your comment.
Hi, this is Pat Hara, and I live on Blackmore Circle since 1970. I implore each of you Commissioners, every one of you, to please protect our residential neighborhood and soundly reject Mosaic Law's amendment request to change its social hall into an event center. Barry, that's a very beautiful place that you're representing, but unfortunately, it is against zoning code to have it in a residential neighborhood, and we have suffered the consequences of law. It's important to note that the social halls are allowed in residential areas, but event centers are not. I was part of the Sierra Boulevard Committee that met several times in 2019 with Mosaic Law's board to discuss the non-congregational activities being held in its permitted social halls, which Mosaic Law calls this center 2300 or the Mosaic Law Event Center. When Mosaic Law presented their amendment request claiming that they have an existing event center and further claiming that our committee fully agreed to the conditions proposed in that amendment for this event center was absolutely false. We are recommending that the Commission please, we don't need this in our neighborhood, it belongs in a commercial area where it can better serve the community and has better access for the attendees. Thank you.
Hello caller, we're having trouble hearing you, can...
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Please send the next caller. Go ahead with your public comment. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, go ahead with your comment please.
Okay, yes, this is Jane Gustafson, I'm the scribe for Sierra Boulevard Neighborhood Committee and later the Coalition. I submitted most of the documents for the representative groups and that's why my name appears so often. Quite simply, there's no existing legal event center on Mosaic Law property. Mosaic Law 2005 Conditional Use Permit authorized a social hall that may be used only for two primary uses, congregation and school events. Despite the signage placed on the building and the misleading ads for an event center on social media, the non-congregational events booked from 2013 to 2019 were illegal. The stock was enforced by planning an environmental review of 2019 denial of Mosaic Law's business license renewed because it had become apparent that the business's activities did not fall within the scope of the approved use permit and within what is allowed by right in zoning code, that's very important. Mosaic Law property sits on residential land and it is surrounded by residential land with over 1,000 residential units. Event centers are prohibited in any residential district. As submitted documentation shows, the planning director did not satisfy the criteria required under Code 3.2.4 to allow Mosaic Law to have incidental events, event center use in this residential neighborhood. A Mosaic Law representative made the false assertion that churches are allowed to have event centers in residential zoned areas for the Religious Mind Use and Institutional Act. Balaupa protects houses of worship from discrimination and zoning laws, but since the county's zoning code prohibition of event center use, in any residential zoning district applies to all entities, seculars and houses of worship, it is not discriminatory and therefore it applies to Mosaic Law. I happened to hear Justice Shen mentioned that UUSS has a social hall for non-congregational events, that is true, but they do not have an event center. And specifically giving Mosaic Law exclusive rights to an event center is extraordinary, and I think is quite illegal and certainly is not allowed in a residential area, thank you very much.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting, go ahead with your comment please.
Thank you, good evening everybody, my name is David Lambert, I am also a neighborhood resident here, I fully support the objections being made by my neighbors and members of the Sierra Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition, I'm also in objection to the amendment being proposed here tonight. Couple of points to make, I agree with the previous commenter around their comments around parking in this neighborhood, this is the nearest neighborhood to the event center being proposed, and while there may be provisions put in place, this is the nearest place for people to park, so people will take that opportunity and it's going to be hard to force the direction given to attendees to the event. I think a point, although that's being neglected, maybe one of the commenters mentioned this, was the Dante Club that's been mentioned that has a legitimate event center location, it's located in a commercial area, and the application we're speaking about here tonight is for an event center to be allowed in a residential area, the residential area has concerns and they've already stated here on the call tonight. Last point I want to make is something that I believe the Chair asked questions about, and also I've had concerns about the enforcement and administration that the 70 non-congregational events limits being requested, it's been established here on the call tonight, and that the center has already knowingly violated a previous 10 events limit, temporary youth permit, given those facts that have concerns that we can proceed and trust when this has already been established. Don't have any further points, but I'm in support of all of the objections that my neighbors have stated here tonight. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Andrew now in the meeting, go ahead with your comment please.
Thank you.
Go ahead please.
Thank you, how much time do I have?
You have two minutes.
Thank you. I am commenting on the Mosaic Law congregation request to convert their hall, their church hall into an event center. First, I'd like to say that any information that you have received indicating the approval of the community is clearly false, there has been no survey taken or any formal means of asserting the community's wishes on this. However, there is a grave and a grassroots effort against this matter, against converting. This opposition is because the concert hall would go against our residential character of our neighborhood, it would create a whole lot of disruptions, which we've already seen. We had a near riot, it was a riot, the church department was called in to end it, people were injured, et cetera. So that it is also clearly not in keeping with the zoning laws, with the, so that a permit here would be, what is being asked for here is illegal. You can also rest assured that if this item passes tonight, that numerous appeals will be launched. I've lived here for 20 years, this is a calm, I would say almost apathetic community, but regarding this matter, I have seen very strong opposition, and that opposition will continue if you decide to continue or to pass the request being made by the Mosaic Law congregation. The members of the congregation themselves are opposed to this, you should know that. I have talked to members of the congregation who were opposed after I told them about what was happening, they were not informed, the congregation themselves were not informed. Thank you, that concludes my comments, any questions?
Thank you sir.
Thank you, good night.
Good night, please send the next caller. Hi, you're now in the meeting, go ahead with your comment please. Hello caller, you're in the meeting, go ahead with your comment.
Hi, good evening everyone, this is Jennifer Choi. I've lived at the Woodside Community for approximately 10 years, and I am in strong opposition to Mosaic Law's plan because of the loud and unreasonable noise that has been occurring and the foreseeable decrease in property value. The loud noise from the Mosaic Law events has caused me a lot of distress, annoyance, and it disturbs the general peace and quiet of Woodside that I'm used to. It is the peace and quiet, those are the reasons why I purchased the property in the first place. The decrease in property value is also expected, real estate agents in the past have advertised the peace and quiet and the park-like setting of Woodside property as a selling point. The owners and agents are obligated to provide all material facts affecting the property's value, including the fact that there is an event center right next door, and that noise can be and will be a nuisance. So Mosaic's Law's proposed medication plan is not acceptable, including the sunset condition that's mentioned here. It's not okay for me and my family to be living next to a neighbor who will be holding events with hundreds of people lasting up till 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM. The fact that they even say that these events will last until 11:00 PM, that is very late, especially in the residential area. Seventy events per year is a big number, for those who don't realize that seventy events is a big number, if you pass this, what you're telling me is that almost on a weekly basis, there's going to be late-night events. So dealing with the concessions and the conditions mentioned here, I am in very strong opposition to Mosaic Law's plan, so thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, go ahead with your comment.
Yes, my name is Barbara Seidman, and I am a resident of the Woodside condominiums directly across from Mosaic Law. I wanted to state my opposition to the amendment because I do not believe that Sierra Boulevard has the appropriate infrastructure to really handle the kinds of traffic and noise and other kind of elements that will happen from constant kind of partying that's going on here. I lived in Midtown for 27 years where these kinds of events were daily and weekly, and that's where they belong, in a place where you don't live on a quiet street, where you live for activity like this. And no matter what you do, events create mess, trash, noise, and are really bothersome to a small little street like Sierra Boulevard is. And it's not, this area is not zoned for this kind of event center, and there's reason for that, and I do not think that it should be changed. There are plenty of places in Sacramento to have events, and Sierra Boulevard is not designed for such activity and should not be, the zoning should not be changed or amended. I again would ask you to please consider the lack of infrastructure here to carry the large amount of traffic and how it would affect pedestrians and people that live here. There are no crosswalks, there are very lights, and it would be very dangerous for this to happen in addition to the excess noise and everything else that such events bring. Thank you very much.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, please start with your comment. Hello caller, please start with your comment.
My name is Jack Burrow, 2249 Sierra Boulevard. Last minute to report how curious the neighborhood was with Mosaic Law for their blatantly breaking zoning code for more than five years, and then planning stating they had no idea it was happening, there's just not enough time. One or two minutes to report how Mosaic Law and planning both purposely misrepresented to seat back that Mosaic Law had an event center and only wanted to have non-congregational events that their non-existent event center, there's just not enough time. One or two minutes to report how planning purposely misrepresented the fact that Mosaic Law had an event center in a negative declaration repeatedly, there's just not enough time. 2019, according to Wendy Hartman, Mosaic Law never had an event center, was never intending to have an event center or non-congregational event. Remember, event centers are not allowed in residential zones under any circumstances. Tonight, unfortunately, there was some several other misleading statements. Justice Shen indicated or reported the Universalist Church has non-congregational events and left it there, leading you to believe that they have an event center. They do not have an event center, they have a social hall. And as you know, there, what can be done in social halls are totally different than what can be done in event centers. Ronnie Holler, in his report, indicated that he was representing the event center at Mosaic Law. There is no such thing as an event center at Mosaic Law. At this time, there is, these misrepresentations have been very disturbing, to say the least. Zoning code 2.6.1 declares, "Planning is obligated to protect the health, welfare, and property values of residential neighborhoods," all of which would not be protected if you approve this application. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, go ahead with your comment please.
Thank you, I'd like to first thank the county of Sacramento for my call, I would also like to thank the county for improvement in our streets for Sierra Boulevard for the past seven years, for example, the speed bump, it's little things like that make living here more desirable. Now, I'm an owner of a unit at Woodside Complex off of Sierra Boulevard, now this proposal will wipe out all gains and improvements in these streets for the past seven years. There'll be increased traffic, fine, and lower property values, I'll just give you what the presentation, what they said. The organizers at this Mosaic Law Center, maybe it's due, they don't, the organizers don't live in this community, we do, and let alone the office street. And let alone the office here at Sierra Boulevard. All the nice stats here that they cited, only been done at our expense. And January 28th, a letter was sent from the Mosaic Law congregation. And it was sent to us, and I'll read something. The letter stated, "Conditions will be enforced by the county upon complaints by the neighbors, should there be future problems." And now we have extra responsibility of notifying law enforcement. I say thanking, no, I say no thanks for that. Now, this may sound, going to be sound maybe a little bit to the stretch of things. But whether they note it or not, what they're proposing and how they're doing it, is it's not going to be good for the neighbors. It's not, it's not a good, nothing good neighbors about it. And kind of hostile in the way they're presenting it. Nothing good can be said about this proposal. So anyways, thank you for the time.
Please send the next caller. Hello, caller. You're in the meeting. Please make your comment.
Yes, hi. I am against the approval of the use of the new permit amendment for the church and private school. Originally, they were given the, the permit that they originally got was just for a church and a private school. But for some reason, they, along the way, they decided to turn the auditorium into an event center. And they used them more as a nightclub than, you know, we've had anything from a biker rally to DJs, music events, to anything you name it, we've had it. And they go on all the nights. The bike rally went up to 4:00 AM in the morning, the bikes up and down the street, constant noise, garbage left on the street. We've had the music so loud, it was supposed to be, you know, they were, the police were trying to say, we don't know why the, or sheriff, we don't know why they're allowed to do this. They're in a residential area. They shouldn't be allowed to do this. But apparently, they have the right, you know, after midnight, we're not, they should be doing this, but they continued for it. So the sheriff comes back out, they shut them all down. They've had helicopters, several cars, making sure they get everything cleared out. They've had, some instances were so bad that they've had riots and brawl. Three times, they've had a fight that has spilled out into the parking lot, one of which was so bad that it spilled out onto the street on Sierra Boulevard, where a young girl was actually stabbed, and she collapsed on this, on this sidewalk. And they had, they had the police come in their right gear and come all the way down Sierra Boulevard, close the entire street off, and push everybody out just so they could get to the girl and get her in an ambulance into the hospital. It's been things like this constantly over and over again, from just loud music all the time. And then they have a crew that they use to clean up after the event, that they are out there playing their own music and chatting late at night, jumping bottles at four or five o'clock in the morning to clean up after the event. It usually doesn't end till two or three in the morning. So they, the fact that they want to now give an amendment to do this in the first place, when they were illegally doing it for up to a year or more, we've had all this going on, I am definitely not for this and against it.
Thank you, caller. Please send the next caller. Hello, caller. You're now in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Joji Tepio, and I have lived at Woodside since 2014. And we own a condominium here. I strongly oppose this amendment request for the following reasons. The proposed events would bring noise, traffic, litter, and a lot of disturbance from the concerts and automobiles driving to and from these concerts up to late at night. I have experienced events at the Unitarian Universalist Church before the pandemic. I've had to stay up late at night because of the noise and lights the cars and people make, especially while leaving the parking lot after an event. What the Mosaic Center is proposing would be a lot worse, because there would be more events and a lot more people. If the proposal is approved, it would seriously disturb our right to the quiet enjoyment, enjoyment of our home. It would flood Sierra Boulevard and the Unitarian Church parking lot with strangers of a known character, and it would bring crime to our neighborhood, like it did before. Because of the noise and traffic from these events, this will be a disclosure liability if we ever want to sell our unit. It will make potential buyers think twice before buying here. Mrs. Weiner, what she said, that we don't, it sounds founded about property values, she doesn't know what she's talking about. I am guessing that for the most part, the Mosaic Law decision-makers do not live in this neighborhood. At the end of the day, they only care about the profits they will get from this permit amendment. But we who live in this neighborhood will be the ones who will suffer the negative consequences if you approve their request. With all due respect, Planning Commissioners, how would you feel if one of these event centers popped up on the street where you live? Please, I urge you to deny the Mosaic Law Center's request. Thank you very much.
Please send the next caller. Go ahead with your comment, please. Hello, caller. Go ahead with your comment.
Hello, this is Ms. Berlin. As an eight-year resident of Woodside condominiums, I oppose this amendment. While living here, I've endured many events that have, more, more often than not, gotten out of hand, all the way from having the police called to having SWAT come out to manage riot activity. As the winers previously stated, the events are to end at 10:00 and 11:00. More often than not, this does not happen. And even if they do wrap up at the time that they're asked to, it takes an hour or two for the patrons to leave, and it's usually not in a quiet manner. They're squealing up and down the road, leaving trash, throwing bottles, screaming. As a resident that lives right across from the hall, I cannot have windows or my door open, my side door open. The music blares straight into my unit. I, I have no peace in my own home during these events. I, I, I strongly hope that you consider our opposition tonight. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. You're now in the meeting. Caller, go ahead with your comment, please.
Oh, what?
Hello, go ahead, please.
Hi, I don't want to, I want to be anonymous.
Go ahead, please.
I am in favor of Mosaic Law holding me down.
Does that complete your comment, ma'am?
Can I, can I make a statement for my boyfriend who is in bed because he goes to bed early?
You've got a minute and 35 seconds. Feel free to do so, please.
He is in favor of having events at Mosaic Law. And I have another friend, that is, lives in Woodside. She is in favor of having events at Mosaic Law. So as long as they're not noisy, we're all for it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello, caller. You're now in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please. Caller, please go ahead with your comment.
Yes, my, my name is Hassan, H-A-S-S-A-N, last name, P-E-J-U-H-E-S-H. I'm an engineer, and I've done many, many projects in Sacramento, city of Sacramento. I own 712 Woodside Lane East Number One, which is right across from the project that we're talking about. And Sierra Boulevard is already overextended in terms of its size. We have office buildings on the avenue side, that half of the people using those office buildings are using Sierra Boulevard. We have a synagogue, we have a church, and we have quite a few multi, fa- large multi, multi-family complexes. It is absolutely absurd to even think about allowing additional traffic and noise to come to Sierra Boulevard. And this, this issue has really been run underneath the rug. And quite a few people, because of the system that it is today, they are against this project, and it's been misrepresented. I adamantly am against this project, and I would, I would not even think that the Planning Commission would even entertain the thought of this. They would not be allowing this kind of project to go on as a brand-new project. I don't understand why they would even consider it for revision of the existing facility. Thank you very much. And I stop.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hello, caller. You're in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi, my name is Speed Noack, and I'm a resident of Walnut View State. My home was previously owned by the former county planning director, Earl Fraser, who helped plan this neighborhood. If he were here today, I'm most certain that this protest would not be needed. Instead, we are having to assert our rights as the current planning director, unilaterally, unilaterally and without review override zoning code. It appears to me that the Planning Department or Commission is culpable here. Why is this an issue, since zoning ordinances carry the weight of the law? An event center is prohibited in any residential zoning district in any use category in Sacramento County. The planning director has stated that Mosaic Law can be allowed incidental use as an event center. Zoning Code defines incidental use as subordinate and of minor consequence to the primary use on the same site and occupies not more than 25% of the gross floor space. However, event centers prohibited in residential zoning districts for any use, including mining use. Therefore, Mosaic Law would be prohibited from having an incidental-use event center in a residential zoning district. Social halls are allowed on a conditional use basis in most residential zoning districts, and are used for individuals to meet and socialize for mutual aid or benefit, being members of a common social service or fraternal organization. As a commercial enterprise, event centers are substantially different from social halls in characteristics, intensity, and compatibility. Event centers are operated by private entity and open to the public for the purposes of hosting banquets, meetings, training seminars, conventions, parties, and other similar social functions. None of these uses would be appropriate in a residential zoning district. Since attending our neighborhood meetings, it's apparent that the Planning Department needs to scrutinize the evidence and consider the impact it will have on this community.
Hello, sir. Can you please wrap up your comment?
Why is Mosaic Law given special consideration? This precedent will have a serious impact on our community and our county. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello, caller. You're now in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Yes, my name is Ann Siebel, and I'm calling in to object to the events and the increasing events at the Mosaic Law Center. This is a family neighborhood that's been disrupted by these events. Its traffic, noise, and violence will only increase by putting citizens at jeopardy. And I would like to end my comment with asking all of you, would you like to have these events in your neighborhood? Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello, caller. You're now in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi, my name is Tina Short, and I live at Woodside Condominiums on the east side, which is basically across from the Mosaic Center. And I'm calling in to object to increasing the number of events at that, at that location. I've lived here for over eight years, and over the years, I've observed a lot of things that go on when they have their event. A lot of times, there's drunken, there are drunken participants. They don't have security at their events. No one controls the parking, so the people are driving through our complex trying to find parking. There's fighting that has occurred in the streets. The noise has increased. Traffic's increased. Parking issues increased. There's nothing good that's going to happen from this. We already are dealing with a homeless encampment down the street. And we have Thursday night at the races in this area. So I don't think subjecting us to, you know, additional problems is going to enhance living in this location. So I would encourage you to not approve this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can you please send the next caller? Hello, caller. You're in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hello, my name is Bill Sessa, and I'm on the Board of Directors with the Homeowners Association. We sent you a letter of opposition in August that represented 725 homeowners. And in that letter, 114 of our homeowners signed a petition expressing their opposition. Your staff report might note it as one piece of correspondence, but it obviously represents a lot more people. I, it was interesting to hear the beginning of this conversation, where there was confusion about a social hall and an event center. And I think one of the reasons why is because Mosaic Law has routinely tried to present an event center and a social hall as the same thing. Legally, they are not. They have continued to say, "We want the same thing we've always had. We've always had an event center." They have not. They have had a legally permitted social hall that they have continued to misrepresent as an event center. The Dante Club is in a commercial zone. It's allowed. An event center here is not. The planning director has labeled this almost as insignificant use, but in, but in fact, it doesn't comply with any of the codes that would allow that designation to be made. Your staff director, Chris, actually answered this question at the very beginning. He said, "An event center is not allowed in a residential area." We've been here before. Mosaic Law actually got a business license from Sacramento County in 2016. And they did it by referring to the social hall and the event center as one and the same. Three years later, Sacramento County figured out that they were running events here that were commercial and not allowed by the zoning. They revoked that business license and said specifically, "These events are outside zoning allow, the zoning code, and it's not allowed here." So nothing has changed. The zoning laws have not changed. The kinds of events that Mosaic Law wants to put on have not changed. The number of events that they want to put on has increased tremendously.
So can you please wrap up your comment?
But Sacramento County has already said, "An event center is not allowed there." This thing got settled two years ago, and we continue to oppose it today.
Thank you, sir. Please send the next caller. Hello, caller. You're now in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hello, my name is Larry Coleman, and I live at 708 Woodside Lane East, Unit 1. I'm directly across the street from the Mosaic Law congregation. I'm a first-time homeowner, and I chose the Arden Arcade area because it was so lovely. It was quiet, nice to walk, and it just made me feel at peace. Well, last year, there was an event that I wasn't aware of. I just heard a whole bunch of noise. There was a band and some music. It went well into the night to the point where I put on earplugs. Now, I purposely chose this area because downtown can be noisy, and this is residential. And all the trees just made me feel comfortable. But with that noise, I feel unsafe. I don't feel, I don't care what you say or how you try to put a bow on. I don't feel, I don't care what you say or how you try to put a bow on it, that it's going to look pretty over here when you've got forces that are unmanageable and variables that you can't account for. I mean, people drink. Myself, I'm a former drinker and some of my behavior was not so stellar. And so I'm fearful for an element to arise in an area where I'm now proud to say I'm a resident. I strongly oppose this amendment. I applaud you for your efforts to, you know, support the community and charities, and I do support those in various avenues. But having a, a commercial, a social event right here in a residential area actually frightens me. So I just, I hope that you do not let this go through. I'd like to keep our neighborhood quiet and beautiful and safe as it is. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please. Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, I'm Lynn Afkin, president of the Woodside Homeowners Association. And it consists of 725 individually owned condominiums and consists of approximately 1,200 residents. And I am representing these people. The members of the Woodside community are primarily concerned with the following issue: excessive number of guests, which is difficult for control as we've observed in the past; the high volume of traffic added to our residential streets and the noise that goes along with it; the excessive noise created by arriving and departing guests, which have little or no awareness of the people in the neighborhood; we have found that ones on Sierra after the close of the event and they're reluctant, they're having so much fun, they're reluctant to leave, and they continue to celebrate on the street; the amplification of the music inside the center on the outside courtyard, which can be heard by the neighborhood; and lastly, the need to request law enforcement to somehow control the criminal activity that takes place afterwards. And we have seen that on Sierra Boulevard and it's gotten to the point where the people are pushing on the fence to get into Woodside. And we just cannot tolerate that. And these conditions create a detrimental living environment for the people that are residing here. And it is not something that they should have to contend with. A letter was sent from the association and attached to the letter was a petition with 144 signatures. This was sent in a very short period of time, but I think it demonstrates that our homeowners are concerned with this proposal. Until this application is compatible with residential zoning on Sierra, on Sierra Boulevard, the Mosaic law needs to reach out to the surrounding neighbors and come to an amicable consensus that meets each party's needs as, as we go forward with, with this said, Woodside requests that the application be denied. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi, I'm Julie Horpedal and I live on Blackmers Circle adjacent to Sierra Boulevard, diagonal to Mosaic Law. First of all, the zoning code does not allow an event center in any residential zoning area for good reason. Large events simply and obviously are not compatible within a residential neighborhood. I'd like to point out that we have three event centers within one mile of our neighborhood. Mosaic law illegally held several commercial events in the last few years. These were referred to on social media as raids. The fallout from these events included added traffic, loud noise, trash, intoxicated attendees in front of our houses, and fights requiring police presence. I think the impacts to our neighborhood have been severely overlooked and undervalued. I'd also like to briefly contrast the type of events that the Unitarian congregation hosts. Usually fundraisers for charity groups in Sacramento. I've been to several. They do not host raids. Hosting fundraiser events for charity fits the mission of religious congregations to benefit members of the community. Raids have no purpose except to provide revenue. They have no connection to the mission of religious organizations and in fact are detrimental to our community. As a result, I don't have confidence the Mosaic law will follow through with their mitigation plans. I urge the commission to deny this request. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hello commissioners, my name is Pamela Williams and I own a home on Sierra Boulevard. Because the hour is getting late, I won't repeat some of the same arguments that have already been made. I'll just endorse the concerns that have been expressed about 70 events is not an incidental use and the traffic concern. And I'll make one statement that I don't think has gotten enough attention. You've heard lots of comments about the prior problems with events, but let's look forward and let's say that the, even if the, all of the conditions are met by Mosaic law and they meet all of their promises, once an event is over, the center has no jurisdiction nor any responsibility to prevent the crowds from spilling onto the street, illegally parking, drunken behavior, throwing trash onto our property, et cetera. This is what we've experienced before. And even if the center meets all of its promises, and assuming in good faith that that's what they intend to do, there will still be significant negative consequences resulting for the neighborhood. So in sum, please do hold the Mosaic law to its original permit for congregational only events. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please. Hello caller, you're in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment.
Hi, my name is Viga Vietr from a Woodside resident. I'm right across the street from Mosaic. I'd like to say I am not opposed to their community center. I think it's a great idea for our community. I think it will create jobs and I think Mosaic is a great neighbor. So I hope they do get the permit to have the community center going.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment. I'm sorry ma'am, we can barely hear you. Can you move closer to your handset, headset or mic?
Oh, can you hear me? I'm not talking.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, am I on, am I on with the group?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, my name is Judah Scott and I live at the Fulton end of a seven tenths of mile long block between Howe and Fulton. This has affected us all the way down to Fulton. And I was asked by members of my local community to share their input with you. Thank you for the time and careful consideration you have given this. And while they still view it as an affront that they have been put through this and the event center has, the Mosaic Law's center has been viewed as an already existing event center, they do understand that there are things that have been proposed that might change some of the activity there, but they are still clearly opposed to this as it is presented even now. They have been, they are, they did have a concern about the auxiliary parking at the Unitarian Church and they appreciate the fact that that has now been dropped. The 70 events with no breakdown as to how many and what types is still quite frightening and unreasonable. And actually, we never had been able to get a good breakdown of their calendars. And it is also absolutely appalling that this would take 15 years to sunset and not put automatically through the, the review process. We, I can tell that they would be greatly approved that so many of their concerns were voiced by those in opposition to the. Period. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. And we should be getting close to, this may be the second to the last caller, Chair. One moment. Hello, you're now in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please. Hello, go on with your comment.
Hello.
Yes, go ahead, please. Please start your comment.
Hi, hi, this is William Fatlowitz and Lisa Castis calling. We live on Erborn Way. We're just around the corner from the Mosaic Law Center. We've lived here for about six years and I've had the misfortune of seeing the negative impacts of events being held at the center. People parking in our neighborhood, leaving trash, drunken behavior, disrespectful. We have a neighbor who is an employee of the center and reached out to them for help to try to disperse crowds that were here after hours and it was a complete debacle. We can hear all the negative feelings that are being generated in the neighborhood and we want to have harmony with the center. It brings, do bring value to the neighborhood, but having events for profit is not going to bring any kind of harmony among the neighbors. We're also suffering with high traffic, noise from Howe Avenue with motorcycles, crews going back and forth on Thursday nights. We have a very large homeless encampment growing on the corner of Fair Oaks and Howe. This neighborhood is already under a lot of stress and it's going to start driving homeowners away. The event center will only make that worse. So we've all heard a lot of the semantics and legal points of view about legality of the center. That's already, I think, been settled, but we would like to just make an emotional appeal to the council to just allow this. And if nothing else, to just kick this down the road for a year or two and reevaluate it when COVID has settled down. The homeless situation may be in better place and perhaps people finding permanent housing. And our community has their legs back under them because right now we all feel very depleted. And we ask that you just please not allow the center to go forward or if anything, please just delay the decision for a year or two. Thank you for your time.
And Chair Rethel, I believe we have our last caller coming on board. Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi, my name is Andrea and I'm a resident of the Walnut View Estates. This decision to make the social hall into an event hall is simply put, a business plan to make money, not caring about our community and what our neighborhood stands for, for us. Your decisions today set precedence on future issues. Imagine these things listed below in your neighborhood. One, more traffic. Two, drug-related activities. Three, sexual activities in cars with leftover condoms and such on the sidewalk. Four, fights and brawls. Five, noise past 11. This is and was a family neighborhood long before the idea of an event center. Imagine this. Can you imagine having 70 non-congregational events a year? Really? That's not even counting the congregational events. This would be every weekend noise in front of your home in your neighborhood. All these things I listed, the one, two, three, four, and five in your neighborhood on your street. Can you, I'm asking you, please don't be swayed by big money and false promises. Please help keep our neighborhood safe and desirable. And lastly, please follow the code of law. We shouldn't even need to be having this discussion. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Rethel, should I close the queue now?
Yes, please. Thank you so much for everyone who commented tonight and I really appreciate hearing all of your thoughts. And I also want to thank those folks that sent in comments we could review ahead of time.
Chair Rethel, this is Brian Holloway.
Yes.
There are a number of callers in support on hold and I'm concerned that the clerk says that there's no more callers.
Hello, Brian, Brian, this is Alma from the clerk's office. Those callers must be attendees and if they're attendees, they needed to follow the guidelines on the agenda, which states the, without, which outlines the public comment procedures.
Um, can you?
Is there a way to re-
Bring them in? Do they need to be presenters?
Lydia, I've never been on the attendee side of things. So if you could give me some clarity on whether we can reopen public comment and have them?
Oh, right. If you'll give me just one moment, I'm going to check with the clerk of the board. We, yeah, if you're on the attendee side, you're not able to make comments. You need to come in on the presentation side, which was, which we did send out at the, with the agenda and so on and so forth. But let me get some clarity if you could just, please bear with me.
Chairperson Rethel, this is Alma Munoz from the clerk's office. If you want to give those persons a few minutes to follow the public comment procedures on the agenda, which says, directs people to call just like 25 or 30 callers that we had in queue, if you want to give them a few minutes, that's really your discretion. But I have no way to know who is on the attendee side. We have a process and, and the other callers followed that process. So if you want to give them a few minutes, we can open the queue and allow them to enter the queue.
Yeah, understood. Thank you, Mr. Holloway, for letting us know. I would like to go ahead and reopen the queue. I do think it's important. And unfortunately, these online meetings, I think, are, as we've known from multiple previous meetings, that, that public has had a hard time participating. And I understand the public health order, but I think we need to understand also that this is not as easy as showing up to talk at a public meeting.
Okay, the queue has been opened and we will wait to see, we'll give it a few minutes to see if the callers can transfer over from the attendee side. Some's in the queue. This is Lydia with the clerk of the board's office.
If somebody could email or text me the, the login information, we can distribute that quickly.
They'll have to make a phone call to area code 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue. It'll be item number one. And again, I'll repeat that, Mr. Holloway. It's 916-875-2500. And the item is number one and it's the queue number one. So they need to follow the prompts.
Okay.
And of course, if folks are also in, yeah, if folks are on the call, whether they're for or against, this would be the time, if you ended up in the wrong place, please go ahead and follow those directions to get placed in queue.
And we should have callers coming in momentarily. Again, bear with us, please. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment. Please proceed.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. So I'm calling in favor of the proposal for a number of reasons. First of all, I'm calling with the SAC Civic Ballet. We're a local community classical ballet arts organization and we have been users at the center for 10 years. And we give ballet performances like The Nutcracker and Sleeping Beauty, Coppelia and other classical ballets. And it's an opportunity that we couldn't find elsewhere here in Sacramento. We were a smaller size classical ballet company. We can't, you know, rent the community center. We need a smaller venue. And speaking of venues and comparing them- And speaking of venues and comparing them, we've been to the Dante for smaller sized events, but to put on a classical ballet, you need a stage, like, is that the center? And it's not always very easy for our type of group. As a matter of fact, we got to the center because the Hiram Johnson High School wasn't available. And that was 10 years ago, and we've been there every year since, multiple times during the year, and always had a good experience. And even have our cousin who lives at Woodside come to our ballet performances, and she never had a bad experience. And I do understand a lot of negative things did happen because of booking unfortunate type of social events, you know, like quinceañeras or whatever. And people get too wild, but that's never been the case with our ballet performances. And as I say, we've been there many times, it's always been a very positive experience. And I'm happy that they've addressed the problems that did go on, which led to unfortunate bookings. And they are no longer doing any of that type of thing. And I believe them when they say that they want to be a positive influence on the community and the neighborhood. And I'm all in favor of the commission granting that use permit.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello, you're now in the meeting, go ahead with your comment, please.
So thank you, members of the planning commission, my name is Randy Pollak, I am the incoming president of the Mosaic Law Conversation. First of all, I just want to thank you for your indulgence in allowing us to comment. Many of us were in the listening mode and were unable to comment previously. I just want to quickly just mention a few things that were raised by some of the concerns of the neighbors. I've been participating in many of those meetings, and we understand the concerns of the neighbors, and we want to be good neighbors. I think it's important to recognize that we aren't going to have semi-events of 300 members, of 300 people attending. Many of our events, our board meetings, theater rehearsals, we have small art shows. Now additionally, I think it's very important to recognize that we understand the concerns of the neighbors, and we want to make sure that the neighbors are clean, there's not a lot of noise, that people aren't running through their streets. As one of our restrictions is that we have in our contract that all attendees are required to park on our property. They will not be admitted unless they are arriving within our property on our parking lot. So that will ensure that there will be no cars parked in the neighborhood. Additionally, in checking with our security chief since over the last 15 minutes, there has not been any interaction by the sheriff on our property since 2016, which I think is very important. We want to make sure we have security on our property, and we will ensure that the neighbors are safe whenever we have events in our facility. I just want to final comment, say that I look forward to continue to work with the neighbors, and I want to give our commitment that we believe that we can be good neighbors, that we will operate within the CUP, and that we can continue to provide a valuable asset to our community, thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, go on with your public comment, please.
Good evening, my name is Maria Salazar, and I'm the board president for the Friends of the Crisis Nursery, an auxiliary of the Sacramento Children's Home. Our purpose is to support the Sacramento Crisis Nursery program, which provides emergency childcare for children zero to five, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, when caregivers experience a crisis. That crisis could be homelessness, unemployment, a behavioral condition, domestic violence, or other crisis. Our fundraising efforts go directly to fund the nurseries. We purchase diapers, food, clothing, a comfort bag for every child, and assist families and caregivers in connecting them with our other community programs to bring them out of their situation. We support their work in our community, which has become even more necessary because of COVID-19. We could not provide this safety net without the fundraising efforts of the Friends, Pink, or other community supporters at the Art and Arcade and Sacramento Rotary. The center at 2300 is the only event center big enough to host our American Girl Fashion Show, which raised over $2250,000 during its tenure at the center. Funds that went directly to support the nurseries. This event also provided an opportunity for our community's children to participate in the fashion show and learn more about the Sacramento Children's Home and the work it does provide care for our vulnerable community members. Further, the more formal sit-down events that have been hosted at the center on behalf of the children's home and the nurseries, raising close to $1 million. Every dollar went to support community programs and would not have been possible without the center. Its location, size, parking, and the flexibility within the space makes the center an exceptional venue. The staff is responsible, conscientious, and works with our board for the successful outcome. I cannot emphasize enough the necessity of fundraising to support these programs, and the center plays a vital role in our efforts. First, while funding continues to decline, and the budget deficit must be closed by fundraising, or our community programs, like the nurseries, are in jeopardy. If the center and other event centers in the area are prohibited from hosting events, it will diminish nonprofit organizations such as the Sacramento Children's Home the ability to serve our families. Thank you for your time this evening, and I urge your support for the center.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting, go ahead with your comment, please.
Good evening, my name is John Thompson, I'm the student activities director at Rockland High School. Wanted to thank you guys for allowing me an opportunity for some public input this evening. Well, I can only speak to my events and the way that I run things, and the things that I do. I've had the opportunity to have events there for about five, six years now. And the events that I run there, I can just let you know, I bring 15 adult chaprums with me. In addition to that, there's two police officers from the Rockland Police Department that are school resource officers that attend with us. And obviously, I'm dealing with a demographic of teenagers that are well chaperoned. And while I don't deny the fact that there's probably some patrons that have visited your establishment that haven't treated it with respect, there are some of us out there that do take that responsibility very seriously. The junior proms that I've held there have been without incident, and I think it's due to not only the procedures that are in place to be with the event center, but as well as the way that I run the event. There just aren't any traffic issues with our event, our demographic, about 75% of my kids show up in lumos or bumble buses. So there's no impact on the local community as far as parking goes, all of our parking exists within the confines of the area. I don't allow the students outside of the event center itself, they're all self-contained inside, we don't go out into the courtyard or anything like that. Obviously, being a high school, there's no alcohol in there as well. And then I am, you know, very cognizant of what happens with my students after the event. When the event ends, I stay onsite and tell every student has left, obviously primarily for the safety of the students that are in attendance, but also out of respect for the community that we're in, making sure that, you know, we're not leaving any kind of a noise footprint on the establishment itself. I believe that there are some legitimate concerns from what I've been listening to for the last couple of hours from the community. But I also don't believe it's necessarily a black and white issue, I think that there is definitely some room for improvement from what I've heard. But I definitely believe that there are opportunities for groups like myself to come in, have a very safe, well-organized event that can work out well. Thank you for your time and opportunity, I appreciate it.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, go ahead with your comment, please.
Yes, good evening, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening, members of the planning commission, good evening, members of the greater community. I live in the Sierra Apartments, literally just yards from Mosaic Law, and I must tell you, I have no objections to the center. Again, I have no objections to the center, Mosaic Law has been an amazing neighbor, so thank you so much, and have a wonderful evening.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi there, my name is Megan Blackwell. I sit on the board for Richmond Sacramento Incorporated, who has been a longtime property owner at 2540 Sierra Boulevard. And we were just down the street from the event center. To be honest, we've actually never experienced any problems or had reports from our tenants that there's been issues for its guests. And we would like to place our support for the conditional use permit. I think they're probably based on commentary from other callers and residences. It sounds like the center has made some, maybe not great decisions in the past. But from what I've heard from staff as well as their management, I think they're willing to work with the residents and truly move forward. And I'd really like to see this move forward from the commission, thank you so much.
And please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting now, go ahead with your comment, please.
My name is Franklin Gumpert. I'm a resident of the neighborhood, living about a half mile from the center. I'm also president of the Board of Trustees of Shalom School, a school serving two-to-five-year-olds in a preschool and the pre-kindergarten through sixth grade. A school that actually is on the same parcel of land as Mosaic Law and the center. Although it's independent completely of Mosaic Law, a large number of families associated with our Shalom School community are also members of Mosaic Law. And we all appreciate the availability of the center for religious services and lifecycle celebrations. Before Shalom School imposed COVID-related restrictions on gatherings of students and families for health reasons, Shalom School used the center for our annual fundraising, galas, student performances, and graduation ceremony. And as soon as COVID variant restrictions are lifted, hopefully with the county health department supporting that in the very near future, we will be able to gather and celebrate together again. And we would not want to hold these celebrations and events anywhere else except on the same site as our school. We at Shalom School can assure this planning commission that we will be fully a cooperative partner with Mosaic Law. When we utilize the center, we will advise all families in advance about restrictions that are part of the permit regarding parking, security, and others. We will make sure that everyone leaves the premises promptly and that they are good community members, thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi, I am calling, I am on the executive board for RAV, which is Rio Americano High School Athletic Supporters. And we are a board of volunteer parents who support the high school athletics. And we have had the privilege of having three fundraisers at the center. We believe that the center, the event center, is an asset not only to the school, but to the community. This, these fundraisers that have been highly successful are a result of the center and the procedures that are set up to help us facilitate a successful event for students and the community. It funds 80 stipends, which allows for over 1,000 students to participate in sports at the high school. Once again, this facility is a safe location for not only the community, but for students. And once again, this call is in support of the event center, thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi, I want to thank the commission for having us speak tonight. My name is Dan Ott, I'm a past president of Mosaic Law and a current trustee there. And I'm in full support of this amendment, as you can guess. I wanted to address specifically some of the restrictions or requirements that we are putting into place, because I've heard a lot of comments tonight about the past. And I do commend someone for talking about looking to the future. But I wanted to note that, one, you know, we apologize for some of the past actions, we recognize that mistakes were made. And we want to reflect that many of the things that have been brought up, especially the comment about the raves, were three and a half and four years ago. There has not been a single event outside of a wedding in over a year. We're talking February of 2019. These raves are well in the past, and they were booked without proper oversight, which we are committing to taking out of the hands of an outside management company. Someone referred to us as management, we're not, we are members, we are community members, and we are committing to make this work. I was at the event, we had a meeting with Woodside residents, and, you know, I've carried a flashlight when we were doing the condition or the temporary use permit. And we made sure that people are not parking in the neighborhood in the three and a half years since those mistakes were made. You know, we don't allow walk-ons for events, so there won't be parking in the neighborhood. And I've heard someone talk, make a comment about our responsibility ends when the event ends, that's not true at all. You know, we are looking to be good neighbors, we don't want to have happen what has happened in the past, and we are committing to do this. You know, again, as I mentioned, I was on the parking patrol, I've been on the security patrol. We're really looking to make this a better situation than what's happened in the past. We don't want to repeat the past, and, you know, we're hoping that this vote going forward, we can show that these, our actions will reflect that. And I commend the commissioners for reopening the line or keeping the line open, and I will feed my time, thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting, go ahead with your comment, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, commissioners, my name is Michael Kennedy. I'm a member and leader in the LGBTQI community, and I also hold a seat currently on the Race and Cultural Equity Task Force with the Metropolitan Arts Commission. And I just want to also thank the neighborhood for also having a welcoming environment. One issue that minority communities often face is having venues that are safe and secure for us to hold events at. And we often turn to other minority communities to help us with fundraising or arts or cultural events. And the Mosaic Center has been an important part of that for our community. And we also want to thank the neighbors for being that as well. Although our events are earlier in the day, they've always made it very clear to us that we needed to make sure that our guests park in their parking lot. Security was provided as well by ourselves and the center for the events that we held. Again, you know, we need to keep in mind that these venues are really critical for communities that don't often have the space to share our stories and culture with each other. And some of these minority-based communities reside in their spaces, and their centers reside in churches. So when we reach out to the Jewish community and do events that are happening inside these spaces, and they have for a long time historically, but I just think, you know, I urge everyone to keep those things in mind, that it's not necessarily black and white. There are other communities that are benefiting from this space, and we really appreciate you. I appreciate the commissioners for allowing me to speak, and I thank the neighbors for being hospitable. And it's because you have a safe neighborhood that we feel welcome to come into that community, so thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi there, this is Pat from Walnut View Estates. I can appreciate the good that Mosaic Law has done for various charity and community groups. However, this event center is just located in the wrong area. I know that the county has plans for modifying Fair Oaks Boulevard between Fulton and Howe Avenue, which will impact Sierra Boulevard with increased traffic. Right now, Sierra Boulevard, it's limited as a two-lane road without even having sidewalks along many portions of its length. This event center should probably be located more in a commercial area with large parking lots, as opposed to being in this small residential neighborhood, which has caused so much grief. as opposed to being in this small residential neighborhood, which has caused so much grief. I vehemently oppose having them continue on with their commercial events. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, it is very interesting to hear how delightful the other people have found the facilities at Mosaic Law. I must say, though, that Mosaic Law is a religious organization, not a commercial enterprise operating in a residential zone. Other large religious organizations such as Calipah Christian Center and Bayside Church are operated in commercial zones. Because an event center is allowed in a commercial zone, these two in particular, and others I'm sure who are in similar zones, would actually under zoning code be allowed to ask for incidental use because they're already in that designation. However, Mosaic Law is not. Mosaic Law is in a residential district, and as such, it is not allowed to have an event center. And why the planning department would be promoting an exception for this one church, Universal Society has a social hall, why they would promoting exceptional use for Mosaic Law is unbelievably unexcusable. Thank you.
And please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Brodowski. I'm a Board of Trustees member and have served as a parking lot attendant since we started our CUP application in 2019. My role as an attendant is to minimize traffic congestion and ensure that no walk-ons are allowed into any events. I wanted to let the board, the commission know that I and other board members will be there on site for the duration of our events to addressing noise complaints, traffic issues, or other concerns. We hear that our neighbors have concerns, and we want to be held responsible to make sure that this is a community center that makes people feel welcome and part of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting. Please go ahead with your comment.
Hello. These events, they don't belong in a high-density neighborhood. Cultural dense or not, this is not your neighborhood. The reason why we haven't had more issues over the last couple of years is because of COVID. It's not because of the Mosaic Law's good faith in handling things because of COVID. Don't let them fool you about this. These people, the people that are supporting this, do they live here? A couple I heard did, but most of them don't. They don't even live anywhere near here, or they wouldn't be accepting this. Imagine having, and having people do fundraisers and parties and et cetera on your street in your neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And Chair, that is the last caller in queue. Shall we close the queue now?
Yes, please. Thank you for reopening it.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I think I'm ready to go ahead and move on to Commissioner deliberation this evening.
Mr. Chairman, could the applicant have an opportunity?
Yeah, applicant rebuttal.
Sure. You can have some time to go ahead and rebut.
Sure, I'll try and be brief. You've heard a lot tonight, and I'd like to correct some of the information that you've heard, primarily from the neighborhood. I think there's an impression out there that was expressed tonight that this is a new event center. Actually, it's not. The request before you is to continue the event center with significantly better controls and restrictions and at a significantly reduced scale with the proper use permit. There was, there's been a lot of comments that the event center is not allowed in the residential zone. It is allowed in the residential zone with a use permit. Your staff would not be recommending approval if it was not allowed in that zone. There's comments that the traffic will be horrible and that Sierra Boulevard will degrade. But two professional traffic studies confirm that the reduced scale of attendance and the restrictions that are in the conditions of approval will not degrade the level of service and traffic on Sierra Boulevard, and it will operate properly. And in fact, if the traffic would be worse, the county traffic engineer would not have allowed this project to go forward. A county traffic engineer added conditions that are included. Also, you've heard again that no parking will be allowed in the area, in the neighborhood, because again, no one will be allowed to walk on the property. If they did park in the neighborhood, they're immediately sent back to bring their car and park on the lot because they're going to need a ticket to get in anyway. You've you've also heard, and I think it was in the staff report, that both the CPAC and your professional staff and the county departments that reviewed this project do not have any problems with it, that it is scaled back and restricted enough that it will function paraply and not have the problems that we've heard so many times that happened before. And that's why your professional staff is recommending approval. What I would like to say is that the problems that you heard tonight spoke about problems that did happen, that we allowed to happen years ago. And you have before you, this is what the staff report says. It gives you a huge number of conditions and restrictions and limitations that will absolutely prevent these problems from happening again. Look, we all make mistakes. That's the way life is. We all make mistakes. But we correct those mistakes, and we move on and we grow. I urge you to give the center and the chance to continue to serve the charities, the arts, and the school beneficiaries. Allow us to go ahead and continue to serve in a restricted, properly managed way. And if we didn't, by some crazy chance, we didn't abide, the county would easily have the capacity to revoke our permit. Please allow this a very important community benefit to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. And with that, we'll go ahead and close public testimony, move on to Commissioner deliberation. Would anyone like to kick us off this evening?
Sir, I'll go first. This is Cara. You know, I understand and appreciate, you know, the, all of the comments from the public tonight. It does appear there have been some errors in judgment, I think, about some events and some problems in the past. But what I don't think really came through, but came up in the conversation with the folks at the event center was the work that went into crafting some of the conditions and new regulations to kind of strike a balance between ensuring this important benefit to the community and then also addressing the concerns of the neighbors. So I'm happy to support staff recommendation tonight. That's not a motion, it's just my comment.
This is Commissioner Tatishi. And I will disclose that I did meet with both the applicant and with the members of the public before tonight's hearing. I agree with Commissioner Martinson that, you know, the conditions are the right step forward in trying to do right by the neighborhood and trying to make sure that there's some balance approach to this. At the same time, I do wonder, and this is where I'm struggling to kind of figure out where the right decision is, is that, you know, there are a lot of other religious organizations that have these social halls. What prevents them from now at this point coming back and petitioning for the same treatment? To say that they would like to also be able to have up to seventy events in their neighborhoods and in other areas? And so I wonder if it doesn't create, to a degree, some ability for us as the county to say, we now have a loophole for all of these groups that got permission to build these social halls under a different permit and then come back to us later after it's already been built and being utilized to say, hey, let's now say we're going to be an event center and offer for more. And that's the part that I'm struggling with a little bit is if this decision, I don't know how I would vote against any other than at some point unless there's something, I mean, as long as they meet all the same conditions and requirements that is here, why wouldn't any other religious institution with a social hall be able to come in to the planning department and say, we want to comply with the exact same thing and be treated the exact same way and now have event centers in all of these residential areas? So I am struggling with that quite a bit on where I'm going to land tonight.
Hi, this is Commissioner Wong. And, you know, first I'd like to start off by thinking, you know, staff and the project applicant for their hard work. And, you know, this was not, this was not an easy project by any means, you know. We all saw the materials. There was a lot of stuff to read through. And I think similar to Commissioner Tatishi, you know, I am also, you know, I'm really struggling on whether or not a lot of the, while I appreciate the effort that has gone into coming up with these various conditions to help mitigate the issues and concerns that the neighborhood has. I think for me, what it comes down to is, is this an appropriate land use in a residential area? And, you know, do the conditions adequately mitigate, you know, what we've got, or should they be going further? Um, you know, similar to what, or just like, or yeah, just like what Commissioner Tatishi said, you know, I'm concerned that this, you know, an approval of a project like this could lead to a slippery slope. You know, we allow this, and then, you know, we have to start allowing, you know, in order to be fair to everyone, you know, it sets precedent in having to start allow for other organizations as well in residential neighborhoods. And there's a reason why we have residential zoning, or there's a reason why we have residential zoning. And, you know, I would just like to say that, you know, I had mentioned earlier that I talked with both sides of the stakeholder, or, you know, both sides from the stakeholder groups. And, you know, and I had discussed some of the concerns that I had with some of the conditions with with the project applicant, because just reading the conditions, just off the top of my head, I could think of multiple loopholes and ways around the conditions. And, you know, in the interest of transparency, the applicant representative had acknowledged that, yeah, no, those things could still happen. And they, you know, the thing that we had talked about specifically was, you know, the prohibition or, you know, the condition that someone who walks onto the premises would not be allowed into the venue. And I said, well, what if they live within walking distance and they walk onto the premises? And they, you know, they would say, well, you would have to, you would tell them to go and re-park their car that's in their garage and park it in the site and, or park it in the parking lot. And, you know, the response was kind of, well, you know, if they have a ticket, we'd have to let them in. So, you know, it's kind of, you know, I don't feel like the conditions are probably as, you know, airtight or, you know, maybe go as far as they should. You know, and I don't think, you know, I'm open to further debate and discussion, but at this point, I don't think that I am ready to support this project.
Commissioner Borja?
Good evening, Chair Raithel, and I appreciate my fellow commissioners and again, the myriad of different community members who have participated, provided input, and engaged all of the planning commissioners, and of course, our hardworking county staff. My two concerns and also thoughts. First of all, I really do recognize that it is an important avenue to be able to provide centers, especially for cultural events, arts, and congregation spaces that would help the local economy and provide jobs. I'm all for it as long as it's an appropriate venue. When you look at Sierra Boulevard, it caters to Howe Avenue and to Fulton and Monroe Street on a greater detail. There are give or so three hundred or less parking spaces available at the event center with overflow parking that would hopefully be mitigated by carpooling as well as having to use ride share. Sierra Boulevard, as I thoroughfare already, and I do not question the level of service analysis that was done by our county staff. I believe level of service still has some merit. I would otherwise try to look at vehicle miles traveled, not regionally, but also take a look at throughput and spacing when it comes to emergency-type purposes. And if we were to assume that at seventy events, there's going to be at max capacity of four hundred guests, let alone the additional staff that would be in arterial or other periphery places that are already existing within the compound, such as the school or the museum or the library, we're a little bit above that number. And I'm deeply concerned to whether or not there would be a justifiable escape route and/or thoroughfare for any of our emergency vehicles, should there be an issue like that. And seventy events qualifies to be more than just one or two per week in a given year. And while I have read every single one of the comments and looked through the county planning staff, I'm really just a little bit concerned about, are we planning for the worst? And if something like this were to happen? And I do understand where the community members are coming from about what happened in the past and giving the applicants an opportunity to be able to correct that. I do have a question with county staff about what are the potential next steps? Should this project be approved or not? And also if there's a way for the county to be able to just take this, take this back, should we approve the use permit? Because what we saw before, where there was kind of an allowable vehicle for them to kind of exercise that flexibility, and then all the bad things happened. And so I'm not saying that we're paying for the sins of the past, but if we are to, again, kind of wait and see and report and have the neighbors complain again, then I don't know if we've done our job completely to vet this and/or if we're prepared to really take a look at how can we hold everybody and our community members accountable with proper oversight in here? And I do share the concerns that that is why we have zoning and appropriate uses for these types of spaces because of access, because of emergency use purposes, because of things like paradise and wildfires. I mean, those are the kinds of things that I worry about. And even though, knock on wood, it's going to be very rare, I think that it would be incumbent upon us to really think about the worst and determine whether or not we've accurately planned for all of those types of events. And again, this is not an attack to the traffic engineer. You all understand the levels of service. I would have just really wanted to see whether or not these types of EMS and EMSA types of preparation have been considered when it comes to putting an allowable use in a residential space where you wouldn't be expecting four hundred or so cars to be there to begin with. Again, thank you for your time, Chair Raithel, and I'll give you back to Mike. Appreciate it.
Maybe in response to Commissioner Borja's question, you know, following the planning commission's decision on this item, whether it's a supporting the request or denying the request, there is an appeal period that will run for ten days and either the applicant or a third party can file an appeal. If the requested amendment is approved and there are violations of the provisions of the use permit, there is a revocation process as defined in the Sacramento County zoning code, should it get to that, should it get to that point? So I just wanted to offer that up in response to Commissioner Borja's question. Uh, should it get to that point? So just wanted to offer that up in response to Commissioner Borja's question.
Thank you Chris. Any follow-up questions Commissioner Borja? Does that answer your question for now?
Uh, that answers it. Thank you so much Chair.
Good. I'll just give you guys um, my thoughts as the last uh. Last one here. I, I had to, to think when I pulled on to the property. Um, you know, which event that I had attended um, at this property. Uh, and uh, it was not one of the raves. Um, just got to be clear about that now. It was actually the Secog um, event. And um, that was building our regional future. Um, and I remember pulling in through the gates and. You know, when I was looking at the project originally, this was not in my head at all. Um, but, but having a place that. That Secog had an event um, for uh, I, I wouldn't think that the neighborhood would have been um, particularly impacted, but I can see how. Um, the late night events and even some things that may. Seem uh, more innocuous, you know, like um, you know, graduation or something like that where there. There are a bunch of people celebrating could, could have an impact on the community. Um, and I also had to really think about how many events um. For nonprofits that I go to at large churches, either in their worship hall. Or an accessory structure that's on there. And, and you know, even if we're saying that this is the only one with a use permit, my, my, my real. True feeling, I had to kind of look at different churches that I've been at events to. And dive into what their zoning was because. Uh, uh, since we allow churches in, in, in so many different zones. Um, it, it largely, you know, I don't think about what zone I'm in when I'm at a, a religious institution. Um, and, and I think they provide fundamental space that's affordable. Um, to many, many nonprofits in the community. Oh, um, and so I had to look and, and some of them are in residential zones and. Um, they probably don't have a, a use permit. Uh, but they also haven't had late night. Events to make the neighbors um, complain to code enforcement and planning. And they haven't done it for multiple years without resolution. Oh, and so I think a lot of this activity goes on um, underneath the radar. Um, and I think it's. Most of this activity, the, the nonprofit um, fundraisers, breakfast, you know, government uses. Um, finding these event spaces is, is a positive and a, and a definite community benefit. Um, and I think some of the commercial event centers would price um, these organizations out. Um, unfortunately, because of, because of, they're just not set up to operate like that. Or maybe they don't have the right facility like we heard about the, the, the stage that was there. So. That's where I'm, I'm headed. Like I, I completely understand not wanting to have late night parties in your community. Twice a week, you know, or, or once a week or, or even once a month. Um, but I also um, think that we shouldn't outlaw. Uh, this use of this space for positive community impact. So. The other thing that, that comes up for me really is, is that this, this use really does border. A significant commercial uh, project. Um, it is zoned like commercial. So if this was one parcel over, um, you know, we would not be really having this discussion. Would they need a use permit still? What is a permitted use in a, in a light commercial zone? But it sounds like they were talking with staff. Um, whenever you get over a certain size, obviously you have more um, restrictions, but. Um, this is a higher density residential zone, um, bordering on a commercial zone. Oh, and so I, I am trying to weigh in how that, that, that spits for me, but I think it is relevant. Um, it's not in um, a single family zone. Um, and it's not a significant distance from a commercial zone. So I, I don't know if that plays into the slippery slope. Um, argument. Um, or if the slippery slope argument only comes up when we're talking about organizations that are hosting larger commercial events, which it sounds like. At this point mosaic law no longer intends to do. Um, and then the incidental use really bothers me uh, from a zoning standpoint, because it's like, oh, we're just allowing exceptions. Um, so I had to kind of dig into the six hundred pages of zoning code. Um, and just with a search, the term incidental comes up in Sacramento County zoning code a hundred and eighteen times. Um, there's a lot of incidental uses that are allowed in our zoning code. Um, and that's not the way for all the, the other jurisdictions. Um, or at least some jurisdictions that, that I've been involved with. Um, there are a lot of incidental uses. That doesn't mean they are not part of our zoning code. Um, so I, I struggle. Um, you know, one, one thought I had and you were just throwing out ideas is to have a quicker sunset. And the other idea I have is, is that hey, this will be a conditional use permit. If we see violations of it, if we see uh, late night parties or large commercial spaces being advertised. I, I have no problem bringing this back to revoke a conditional use permit. Um, I would be the one to, to, to absolutely put it on the agenda. Um, seriously, um, and uh, without any hesitation, if we saw any of the past. Um, you know, late night, uh, larger commercial events that have an impact on the community. So. Those are some, some thoughts I have just in trying to mitigate uh, the impacts to the community. Um, just wanted to share my, my initial thoughts, but it is a, is a thorny issue. Um, it's made very complicated uh, by the history um, associated with, with the use here.
Yeah, this is um, Commissioner Martinson. I guess I'll just kind of chime in too. Um. I'd, I'd be supportive of a, a shorter sunset period um, to come back um, and review. Um, you know, the activities and make sure there's adequate compliance. I do think. That, you know, having this type, I mean, we can't include. Every single scenario in a zoning code, and that's why I do think that there are opportunities like this to come back to the commission for public input. Um, and, and debate and deliberation. I also agree that. There aren't that many spaces in, in the community for. Um, for affordable events for nonprofits and groups, um, and having something like this. Um, with the appropriate conditions and controls, I think, you know, really adds to the community in general. And that's why I'm generally supportive. Um, of this moving forward. But understand again, you know, there have been incidents, serious incidents in, in the past and you know, there's legitimate concern. I do think the collaboration between the um, the project proponents and the community has really. Um, gone a long way to address and put in controls in case those. Any of those conditions are violated in the future and there are opportunities to come back and, and you know, address these items. But. Um, uh, I'm, I'm open to if it makes folks more comfortable. I don't know if it'll go as far. For everybody, but um, I'm open to the idea of a, a shorter sunset for kind of continued um, review.
Chair Raithel, is that something that we can ask? The staff or the applicant right at this time? Or I. What, what would be the actual process for that? Condition?
Chris, do you want to answer that?
Um, sure. I, I, if the planning commission is interested in, in amending. Uh, the recommended condition, I believe it's condition five that has a fifteen year sunset. Um, that would just be part of the um, motion um, and part of your, your action. Um, I would suggest that you ask the applicant and just get their uh. I have a discussion about it with them, but uh, that's certainly within the purview of the, of the planning commission. I should also note that um, you know, maybe before we get a little too far. Down the road that uh, the applicant team did suggest some amendments to conditions as well. And. Before we go too far, we do need to kind of circle back with those conditions. And if those are going to be recommended conditions. That the planning commission wants to um, you know, think. Uh, I think staff will need to. You know, understand exactly what changes to conditions would be proposed. And that could actually have an uh, impact on uh, some, or it could impact. Or we could um, want to recommend a continuance of the item in order to address those. Um, recommended changes to those conditions, which one of them. Does affect condition twenty-one, which is a um, mitigation monitoring and reporting. Uh, program condition. So just wanted to acknowledge that based on the. Uh, changes that the applicant team is request, requested as part of their presentation.
And Chris, you mean specifically related to parking at the Unitarian Universalist Church?
That's correct. They've mentioned uh, um, modifications perhaps to condition six, maybe condition seven as it relates to the parking. Um, parking management plan, which again, then I'm assuming would have an impact on condition twenty-one. Which requires a um, striped crossing uh, at, at or near the Universalist Church. So all of those changes actually have some. Some bigger impacts that we probably need to clean up before, if that isn't indeed what's being requested and what the commission is entertaining.
Just taking a second to review those. And uh, Mr. Holloway, is that your request this evening um, that the. Parking um, be completely onsite?
Yes. Because at the lower scaled back version, both in terms of number of maximum attendees and number of events per year. Uh, we can easily park onsite. One of the condition that um, we want to make sure is included is the. The additional condition of no more than forty-nine. Events that would exceed three hundred attendees. The idea is to um. Use that to create more opportunities for smaller venues. And, and alleviate fears that there would be seventy all large events, because that's not the, the, the way it works.
Commissioners, if it is helpful, I can go through what, um, I can provide a summary of what the applicant's changes to the project's description entails, as well as. What that would mean for your conditions of approval.
That would be great. Please proceed.
So um, in attachment two. The applicant is proposing two changes. The first change is to accommodate all parking onsite, so there would be no overflow parking. Second change would be that the seventy events are limited to forty-nine events. That are, that have a capacity of three hundred to four hundred persons. And the remaining twenty-one events would be less than three hundred persons. But those two changes, we're looking at modifying condition number six. Um, that currently states that non-congregational events are limited to seventy events per calendar year. We would also add in the limitations of. Forty-nine events for the three hundred to four hundred person capacity. Well, as the twenty-one events for the less than three hundred capacity. Condition seven, the um, the referenced exhibit, traffic management and parking plan, that would be revised to remove the offsite parking. At the overflow lot. And then lastly, condition number twenty-one. Which is a mitigation measure identified from the environmental document would no longer be applicable as. Um, there would no be like, there would not be any pedestrians walking between the two sites.
And no changes to condition twenty-two or twenty-three uh, associated with DOT and ADA access?
No, these are standard um, conditions they place on our project.
Thank you. Does that summarize it um, correctly, Mr. Holloway?
Yes, it does. Um.
And maybe if, if I can just interact, interject really quickly before we go any further with that, just wanted to get county council's. Uh, opinion on the striking of a mitigation measure as part of the commission action?
Well, if the um, the mitigation measure is the crosswalk. Yeah, if there's no longer a need for it, if it's, if there's no longer a need to. Uh, avoid or mitigate a impact that was previously. Found to be potentially significant, it's a moot point. So that would be fine.
Thank you for that clarification. All right. So it sounds like any, all of the changes we could do without a continuation um, at this point. As long as commissioners are okay with it. Is that correct from a staff standpoint?
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Now, going back to some of the discussion about possibly um, reducing the time of the permit. Um, I would like to offer um, an alternative of instead of the fifteen year permit, a ten year permit.
On condition number five? Okay.
That gives us the opportunity to prove that we could be a good neighbor. And then come back for renewal.
Thank you for that. All right. I'll move back to the uh, commissioners. Um. Either for a motion to move us forward tonight or give us more room for, opportunity for discussion.
Hi, this is um, Commissioner Wong and you know, I certainly appreciate um, the project applicant's willingness to further discuss some further um. Uh, massaging of the um, conditions um, that have been put forward on the project. Um. You know, I'm wondering, you know, I, I certainly appreciate the willingness to go down to um, you know. Uh, a maximum of forty-nine events per year that have between three hundred and four hundred capacity. But you know, that, that's still an average of almost one large event. Per week. And I'm wondering if there's any appetite from the applicant or from any of the other commissioners to potentially explore. Um, lowering that um, a little bit more. Um, I, you know, I'm just kind of thinking, you know, thinking of some of the. You know, with uh, Sierra Boulevard being, you know, uh, two lane road and then, you know, sort of some of the traffic impacts and, you know, like uh, even though, you know, Commissioner um. Uh, Brohl said, you know, the, the LO, or not the LOS, um. Yeah, no, they're, sorry, the, the. Initial study did both VMT and there was LOS study, but you know, that said, you know, less than significant, but you know, I think. You know, and I'm, I'm certainly not questioning, you know, their analysis of that. They're, they are definitely the experts in it, but I would imagine that, you know. During the time of these events, when there's potentially for, uh, you know, between three hundred and four hundred. Um, attendees trying to get in and out of a parking spot at one time, that's going to cause. Um, some backup. And if we're looking at potentially forty-nine events per year, that's once a week that, you know, the neighbors are going to have to be. Um, dealing with these traffic, uh, potential traffic impacts. Uh, so is there any appetite to maybe lower that more or? Not?
I'll just chime in real quick with my, my thoughts and um. I guess when you live next to a large church, you have an expectation um, to me to. To have congregation of three hundred to four hundred people that would attend a church service, or sometimes multiple church services. But I don't see that the use is necessarily consistent with the primary use. Just from my own, my own standpoint, I think of the large churches. Um, that are this size and, and near my house and the events that they hold. And that sort of number coming in and out of them, it's. It's not um. It's not detrimental to the community. Um, because that's what they're, that's what they were designed to handle in their, in their primary use.
Um, so I mean. Do you also live off of a two lane road? Commissioner Raithel?
Uh, I live in a residential neighborhood. Um. But yeah, I'm very familiar. I was actually um, a, a, a part of the congregation of Unitarian Universalist. Uh, twelve, thirteen years ago when I moved to the area. But I am very familiar with the area and I'm. But I am very familiar with the area and I'm very familiar with with Sierra Boulevard.
Okay, well, I mean, if if the if my fellow commissioners feel that the, you know, the influx of, you know, three to 400 people on average once a week is not a big deal, I think that we will just have to agree to disagree on that point. And, you know, I would just like to comment that, you know, you say it's, you know, if you're going to live next to a church, you expect, you know, when there's going to be services, that there's going to be a lot of people, you know, going to and from the facilities. But we're talking about events, not just the religious events that are taking place there, but also now non-congregational events that are taking place in addition to the services.
I completely understand and respect you. I was just giving you my experience. I have been to one event there that had a mobility demonstration by Saqog. I parked in the parking lot. I pulled in past the guard station. There was no backup on Sierra Boulevard. I'm just I'm just giving you my experience of what what I see with churches that are of similar size and this this church and this event center in particular.
Was so one more question, was the Saqog event between three and 400 people?
That event center room was very full. I didn't count attendees. I'm not really sure, but the room was full of tables and there was a lot of folks that were there, but I don't know.
Okay, fair.
Mr. Chair, it's it's important to remember that with our master calendar we'll have available, we'll be able to plan to not have a large faith service at the same time. There would be a larger event and likely not even to have a large event while the Shalom School is in session. So, you know, we're we're very sensitive to not, you know, over overactivating the site and using up so much of the parking and causing traffic. So that'll be managed and that that calendar will be available to any neighbor that would like to come in and see when both faith and non faith events would be happening.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Martinson. I tend to agree. I mean, I think amending the condition of the sunset just gives us overall as a commission more oversight and and applicant more accountability. But I do think that staff and the applicant have worked together with the community to really craft conditions to put, you know, guardrails around some of the incidents that have happened in the past. So I would be supportive of keeping those with the exception of the the condition amendments that the applicant suggested as is.
So again, this is staff Chris Bohuely. Just want to kind of make sure that we kind of run the MMRP piece through just so that that we have the conversation and county council provides an opinion as well before the commission takes action on the item. So the the MMRP is is really set up to address that one mitigation measure based on the action. It appears that the MMRP would not be required. So just want to make sure that that county council opines on that. And if that's going to be removed from the action, then that is that we're fine with that approach.
So Chris, I think you're asking me the same question again. As I understand it, there's no motion yet, but what's being discussed is changing project in the sense that there will be no parking at the church across the street. And if there's no parking and no shuttle from across the street, you don't, there's no reason for a crosswalk.
Right. I just want to make I want to make sure that the commissioners understand that part of the action that's before them is to adopt the MMRP and that by revising these conditions, that MMRP is no longer necessary and would not be part of the action this evening.
That would have to be part of the motion.
Additionally, county council, the materials prepared for the project identify a mitigated negative declaration. And we want to make sure that with the dropping of the mitigation measure, this document is now a negative declaration and there's no resulting impacts from making this change that staff does not need to take back to maybe fix or clean up.
Well, now I'm the project's been noticed with a negative declaration. You do have to notice it specifically is mitigated if that's what it's going to be, but at this point, it's looking like it, well, maybe it won't be. But removing that one mitigation measure, I'm not going to recommend that you need to continue this or or renotice the action.
Okay, thank you.
You can go ahead and act. And you can treat the environmental document as a negative declaration.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. So we have something to discuss. I'm going to go ahead and move staff recommendations with the following changes. Reducing condition number five down to a 10 year sunset. Adjusting condition number six to include 49 events that exceed 300 attendees. All right. And then I got to condition number seven, and now I need to look at that.
Chair, the change to number seven would be to the exhibit that is referenced. Current traffic management and parking plan outlines the offsite parking and how traffic would be or parking monitors would be directing folks to park at the offsite location. So exhibit B would be modified.
Perfect. So modifying condition number seven to show all onsite parking.
Yes.
And removing mitigation measure condition number 21 and also removing the MMR or mitigation monitoring and reporting plan.
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, further comments or discussion?
And this is Commissioner Tetechi. I'll just say that I don't think I'll be able to support the motion tonight. I appreciate where the applicant is trying to come together and work on these, you know, on everything. I just I struggle with when when the building was built, it was under an assumption with the neighborhood and a commitment that was this was going to be a social hall for the congregation and used not for commercial purposes. That didn't necessarily occur. We've heard that there were errors made. But to come back now and say it needs to be a commercial event center, even for a limited amount, I don't know that I see how I can how I can get there tonight with that. It's one thing if from the beginning, this was the commitment and the covenant made to the neighborhood from the beginning of the day, but this is not the beginning. This is years after after the whole situation. And I do feel that there was a bit of a bait and switch that was put forward and and I worry that the next, you know, religious organization that comes forward who has a social hall that now wants a commercial event center to support nonprofits. I don't know how we wouldn't be able to then, you know, go through this. So again, I do believe that there are exceptions as Chairman Rethol has talked about where we can you know, look at those. But I think that from my perspective on this one, those exceptions should be coming at the inception, not after the fact and not after, you know, the the, in this case, a failure to control the situation or even comply with the situation. So I would be not, I will not be supporting that motion today.
Other comments, commissioners, before I call for a vote?
I guess I would ask for the folks that we haven't heard from our fellow commissioners if there's a substitute motion that would be of interest, or if there's some, you know, middle ground to talk about tonight, or even if there's a desire to continue the item, although I know that's, you know, you know, that's problematic as well. But if there's some sort of path that could satisfy some of the legitimate concerns that you guys have all raised tonight, that I do think, you know, were voiced by neighbors and and others before we take action tonight.
Hi, this is Commissioner Wong again. You know, I think like I I said before, I would definitely be interested in exploring whether or not, you know, the the number of three to 400 capacity events can come down any. You know, I don't I don't know what that magic number would be. I feel like I can't read. There are a lot of materials that we read through in preparation for this meeting, and I feel like I read somewhere that a lot of the neighbors were asking for somewhere, I think they were asking for 22, and I'm not saying we go all the way down to 22, but is there a sweet spot somewhere between averaging, you know, one a week to or yeah, one a week to, let's see, 22 would be basically one every other week, right? So two a month. And, you know, just, you know, I do not specialize in I guess civil suits by any means, but I can't and I don't know if anyone on the call has any experience, but you know, I wonder if there's any argument for a nuisance case, if there could be an argument for a nuisance case in this. Just want to put that out there.
Yeah, I don't see that really as our purview, but appreciate your your suggestion about potentially, you know, reducing the amount of events. I'd be interested to hear from the rest of the commissioners, but also I think, you know, maybe calling back the applicant and seeing if there's, you know, I agree, we don't necessarily, we might need additional, I guess, time to kind of deliberate or negotiate with the and talk to the applicant about what's, you know, acceptable. Interested in other commissioner thoughts on potentially that as a path forward.
I'd be fine with bringing the number of events down. And the other thing that I kind of thought about when when reading this was is just restricting the use to or the use to other nonprofit uses. Because I think that may be where the issue has come from is is if you have a nonprofit religious institution that's temporarily leasing out of a space to a for profit entity.
This is Commissioner Wong again. I kind of like the idea of that, Commissioner Rethol, and I'm definitely open to exploring that idea as well.
If that's permissible, I would be interested in hearing how that could work.
I'm on the same boat.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, if we can go back to the applicant and get some feedback on number of events and the restriction that we could consider only you could only have nonprofit events, would that be acceptable?
I'm sorry, I was texting with my clients on a lower number. And it seems to me, and it seems through the discussion, that the concern is about the impact of large events. I suspect the commission is not concerned about the the teacher luncheons and the gatherings of the seroptomists and those kinds of, you know, smaller events that are that count as part of the 70. So what occurred to me might work because the larger events are the ones that are concerned would be that we had reached agreement with our our neighbor that there would be only 49 large events. And because we want to be able to serve the smaller nonprofits and the smaller venues. So what what could work would be if we reduced the number of large events to 34 of the of the 70. And then that would allow us to continue to serve the the smaller events and not have the building sit vacant because we've limited out to just a few events per year. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me. So 34 instead of the 49 that exceed 300 attendees. What about restricting to just nonprofits? Do you guys even do you guys even have events that you use that you invite for profits to lease the center?
There are occasional smaller weddings and birthday events. You know, the the, some of the smaller chamber of commerces would would not be able to have a lunch there or a training. You know, there's there's a lot of users that don't happen to be, you know, nonprofits. And we would be restricting those out. They would be, they would have to go someplace else.
Yes, your chambers are normally 501(c)(4), so they're still nonprofits. They may not be 501(c)(3), but they'd still be in the nonprofit category.
Yeah. So you might have a luncheon of business folks. You know, there are certain there's certain groups that attend that that are not nonprofit. And so we'd still like to serve those because they serve a community of people in need. And so I was thinking that if the big concern is the big events, I was thinking of focusing on that. Teachers, for example, Sutter Sutter Hospital. You know, those kinds of people would be excluded.
And they serve the nonprofit as well.
Yeah, I think and I think my main concern is is the Friday, Saturday night for profit crowd. I think that's what that's what got the organization in trouble. Or the the center, I think that's what caused some of the issues. And so if we just take that off the plate, it's not necessarily when when the current folks are managing the center, but maybe when the next group of folks are managing the center, if that restriction's in place, it avoids the temptation for using it as a profit center.
Yeah, I think we would be we would be comfortable with no no nonprofits on weekend evenings, Friday, Saturday. That allows us to serve the smaller people, the smaller groups for lunches and teacher, you know, training and awards and retirements and things like that.
Okay. Commissioners, thoughts?
Hi, this is Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, I appreciate the Mr. Holloway coming to the table and discussing these with us. And, you know, I think that you know, with the the sunset that we've talked about, you know, sort of the conditions in totality. So I think it was like the sunset that we've talked about, decreasing the the we'll just call them the big events to 34 events. And then, you know, limiting the Friday, Saturday night events to nonprofits, because, you know, I think we're all, you know, we're all worried about, you know, the more rowdy or potentially rowdy events happening. I think I covered all the conditions that we discussed. I think I would be comfortable in supporting the project moving forward.
And Commissioner Wong, can I accept that as a is that a friendly amendment that you were making there?
Um, sure. If that's what it's called, sure.
Well, no, that's not what it's called. You need to make a motion to amend. So if that was, you're moving to amend the prior motion.
Okay, I moved to amend the prior motion in the ways I had just outlined.
And we can't use the friendly amendment process, counsel?
A second for that.
I'll second. This is Kara.
So just to clarify, this is, so a nonprofit is only on Friday or Saturday nights, but Sunday through Thursday, any, anyone could use the venue as a commercial use?
Within the limited number of events that they're restricted to.
Did we lose you, Chris?
No, but the lights did go off in the, in the office. So I did turn my, I did disable my camera. But before, I think before we move forward, I do think perhaps maybe Jessie Chen can maybe review the condition that she has noted before, before you take action on it.
Commissioners, if I can ask for a clarification quickly? So non-congregational events held on Friday and Saturday shall be leased only to nonprofit organizations. Did I hear maybe limiting that to only the nighttime period?
Commissioner Wong, it's your amend, motion to amend, your preference.
Um, yes, or yeah, limiting that restriction to the nighttime period. Because I believe that that is the majority of the commissioners' main concerns. We're not, we're not so concerned with the daytime events, but it's the nighttime events.
Commissioner Wong, are you comfortable with identifying that period starting at 5:00 p.m.? So no for-profit events Friday, Saturdays from 5:00 p.m. onward?
Yes, that sounds, that sounds fine to me.
Commissioners, would you like me to read to you the changes, the conditions? Or would you like me to read to you your new condition?
I got a question for counsel first. Since this is, I normally am familiar with the friendly amendment process where we take the whole thing as one vote. But since we've made a motion to amend, we need to take, have a second vote to them. We need to have a first vote on the amendment before we proceed.
On the amendment first, if it passes, you're done.
Okay, so we'll use the traditional amendment process. So right now, let's just, let's just cover the text of the amendment because we have to take a separate vote on that before we move forward. Jessie?
Yes. Okay, so your new condition is as an ongoing measure, non-congregational events held on Fridays and Saturdays after 5 o'clock p.m. shall be leased only to nonprofit organizations.
Yes.
Perfect. Would you also like me to recover the other conditions that are being modified? I can read them to you in whole.
I think we need to, I think we need to take an action first on the amendment and then we can have.
It's really, I mean, I think this is more of a substitute motion. We've been calling it a motion to amend, but I think what you're really doing is you're still talking about an approval, you're modifying the conditions that you had discussed previously. You could take this as a substitute motion and act on the entire proposal in one vote.
That's, that, that would be my preference. Yeah, I normally think of that as the friendly amendment process. So that works just fine. Perfect. Let's cover all of the changes.
This staff should go through the, go through what they understand to be the current changed conditions. Before you vote.
Sounds good.
I'm sorry to interject. This is Alma from the clerk's office. I have a question for Mr. Burke. So would Chairperson Raithol need to withdraw his motion?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any, I'm going to ask for further discussion from commissioners first, and then we can review everything at once, and then before I call for the vote. Are there any other comments from commissioners on the amendment? Because I'm not sure everybody got a chance to weigh in there if they wanted to.
Just a question from the applicant.
Go ahead, Mr. Holloway.
Sure. Would we get a, a recommendation on whether a school would count as a nonprofit?
I believe under the IRS code, and correct me if I'm wrong, IRS code government entities can be considered charitable donations. So wouldn't that classify, I mean, maybe we need to clarify it, but government entities can receive charitable donations, so. And most private schools are all listed as a 501(c)(3).
Do we need, are we concerned directly with Shalom School? Or other schools?
I would suspect the Shalom School would be part of the congregation.
Okay.
If you want to make it clear that you wanted to include a, a school within the, the group of users that can use the center, the facility on, on weekend nights, you can just say nonprofits and, and schools and public agency, public agencies.
Thank you. That's a good clarification.
Also, commissioners, wanted to bring to your attention, you can define what you mean by nonprofit in your condition. 501(c)(3), 503(c), we can put that into the condition as well.
I'm comfortable with all nonprofit schools and public agencies.
Commissioner Wong, does that work for you?
Yes, it does.
All right. Any further discussion from commissioners before I have staff review the changes? Their recommendation? All right, Jessie, if you go ahead and review those changes for us, I would appreciate it.
Yes, of course. Condition number five now reads, as an ongoing measure, this use permit allowing incidental non-congregational events in our use on the subject property shall expire 10 years from the date of approval from the decision body. A use permit amendment to be heard by the original decision body is required to continue incidental non-congregational events in our use on the subject parcel beyond the identified expiration. Condition number six, as it now reads, as an ongoing measure, non-congregational events shall be limited to 70 events per calendar year. Specifically, 34 non-congregational events would be limited to a capacity of 300 to 400 persons. And 36 events would be limited to a capacity of less than 300 persons. The maximum number of attendees for non-congregational events held indoors at the subject parcel shall not exceed 400 attendees for each event. And the maximum number of attendees for non-congregational events held outdoor at the Frehman Courtyard shall not exceed 45 attendees. New condition number seven, it reads, as an ongoing measure, non-congregational events held on Fridays and Saturdays after 5:00 p.m. shall be leased only to nonprofit organizations, schools and public agencies. And revised condition number eight, as it reads, is as an ongoing measure, the traffic and parking management of non-congregational events on the subject parcel shall be in accordance with Exhibit B, Revised Traffic Management and Parking Plan, which will be revised following this meeting. And then condition number 21, or sorry, condition number 22 has been struck as well as advisory 3 from DOT that references the mitigation measure. So those are the, those are the summary of the changes made.
All right, any further discussion, commissioners, before I call for a vote? All right, Lydia, will you please call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioners, Boja.
Yes.
Thank you. Martson?
Yes.
Raithol?
Yes.
Teteche?
No.
And Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes as amended.
Thank you, commissioners.
I apologize with Commissioner Teteche voting no on this. Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody, for the participation this evening and working through that tough issue and hearing all the comment. We'll now move on to item number two in the agenda.
Item number two is the planning director's report.
Good evening, commissioners. Christopher Houli, once again, just real two, or really quickly, two, two items just to note for your, for your attention. One is that we do have a board hearing tomorrow. At the board hearing, we do have a workshop scheduled with the board to discuss alcohol permitting and do expect to receive some direction from the board as it relates to future code amendments perhaps. And so we will keep you posted as far as any direction from the, any direction from the board related to future zoning code amendments. And then the only other item that I wanted to mention, because we will be hearing it before you meet again, is that on February 8th, also at the Board of Supervisors, we have a number of items going before the board, including the Tokai Crossing subdivision, which I know was a item of interest at the Planning Commission. It's a subdivision in the Vineyard Community. And so we'll report back at your February 14th meeting about how that item goes. That's all I have.
Item number three is a miscellaneous scheduling item.
Again, this is Christopher Houli. I don't have anything to report under this item.
And the final item on your agenda this evening is for item number four, which is the public comments, and there are no additional public comments this evening.
All right, thank you all for your time this evening. We're going to go ahead and adjourn at 9:13 p.m. Have a good night, everyone.
Night.
Good night. Take care, everyone.
Good night.